Welcome, everyone, to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of March 22nd, 2021. In accordance with L.B. 896, please be advised that the copy of the Opens Meeting Act is posted in the back of the room by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge Allegiance, followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, that was a little loud. The order of the business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and if they are speaking in favor or opposition of the item. We do have a sign up sheet in the back for one of our items for the Climate Action Plan, so if you haven't signed in and you want to speak on that, please do. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearing, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under the third reading. On the second last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to the adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for future agenda. Okay, clerk, please call the first item of business.
Today's agenda for Monday, March 22nd, 2021. If you still wish to appear in person on an item on the agenda, you may come to this county city building at 555 South 10th Street. Limited seating is available in the council chambers. Testifiers are asked to wait in the Bill Luxford Studio or the hallway until your item is called. Then you can enter the council chambers and come to the podium. After you are finished speaking, you can exit the chambers through the door to your immediate left. Our first item on our agenda is our Consent Agenda, Sections 1 and 2.
Is there anyone who would like to come forward on anything on the Consent Agenda, Items 1 and 2? Nobody coming forward, and we will close the public hearing on Consent Agenda.
We can now vote on these items. Item 1A is Assessment Resolution for Special Assessment Repaving District #159 for Board of Equalization to be held on March 29th, 2021 at 5:30 p.m., introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
And moved in second by Councilwoman Christensen. Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0. Item 1B is Assessment Resolution for Cornhusker Highway and Fletcher Avenue Special Assessment Sewer District #1189 for Board of Equalization to be held on March 29th, 2021 at 5:30 p.m., introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Ward. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0. Item 1C is Assessment Resolution for Greenwood Street Special Assessment Water District #1210 for Board of Equalization to be held on March 29th, 2021 at 5:30 p.m., introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilwoman Christensen. Any comments? Please call a roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0.
Okay, move on to item 4.
Section 4s are public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll be calling Items 4A and 4B together. Application of Corn Coast Brewing LLC, doing business as Corn Coast Brewing, for a Class L liquor license located at 1433 Dahlberg Drive, Suites A through C, and the related manager application of Daniel J. Walkmeyer.
Is there anybody who would like to come forward on this item? 4A or 4B? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Those two items.
No, we, yeah.
I'll be calling Items 4C, manager application of Todd K. Wimpel for Newmark Golf LLC, doing business as Newmark Golf Course at 4944 South 89th Street.
Is there anybody who'd like to come forward and speak on Item 4C? Seeing none, let's move on.
I'll be calling Items 4D and 4E together. Manager application of Hannah L. McManon for Mochara LLC, doing business as The Watering Hole at 1319-1321 O Street, as well as the manager for Cliff's Martini Lounge at 5310 South 56th Street, Suite 1.
Is there anybody that'd like to come forward on this item? Items 4D or 4E? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Seeing none, I move approval of Items 4A through E.
Second.
And moved in second by Councilperson Raybold. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Bowers?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-0.
Okay, move on to number 5.
We're now Section 5, Item 5A, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 21001, Application of Mayor's Office to amend the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan to adopt and incorporate into a comprehensive plan the City of Lincoln Climate Action Plan.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, City Council. I'm Miki Esposito, Senior Policy Advisor to Mayor, and here to introduce this resolution to you. I also have Kim Morrow from Veritas Group today to speak on behalf of the resolution as well. Bear with me a sec, I'm gonna open up, oh, it looks like you can see the presentation. Very good. There we go. So, the Climate Action Plan has come about from an understanding for the need to significantly reduce greenhouse gas emissions and slow the pace of climate change. Like every city, country, state, individual across the globe, we must take ownership of this problem and do our part to address it. We also have the ultimate responsibility to protect Lincoln residents and businesses as well as our way of life. That calls for a focus on resilience. Resilience planning doesn't just rely on historical data and information. What we're learning about climate change and how it impacts us locally is that we must design policy, systems, and infrastructure to handle a wide range of severe conditions, including wild, unpredictable, extreme weather events. And this is how climate change is showing up in our region. Ultimately, the Climate Action Plan proposes to do what we've always done, plan for the weather. Our history and diligence in proactive planning hasn't changed. What's different now is the frequency, severity, and intensity of what we're planning for. This policy has been developed to proactively respond to 12 climate risks, to support public health, public safety, and public infrastructure, to protect our most vulnerable from climate impacts, to preserve our way of life both now and for future generations, to mitigate risk and avoid costly impacts, and also to seize an economic opportunity, growing jobs and businesses, as well as opening markets to be competitive. We've had a lot of success in the realm of environmental protection and sustainability, and that success is showing up in the data. It's proving that we can take action and make a difference. We also have the backing of our community. Public sentiment supports climate action, and this six-year plan covering eight climate action areas seeks to reduce net greenhouse gas emissions 80% by 2050. It strives to make Lincoln resilient to the climate hazards it will face, and it prioritizes over 100 key initiatives, most of which may be implemented without new funding or additional authority. I'd like to quickly turn it to Kim Morrow from Veritas, who will put the plan into context, and then I'll provide some answers to questions that you had earlier during the budget process.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Kim Morrow. I serve as Director of Climate Planning and Resilience at Veritas Group, and it was my honor to serve as project lead in developing Lincoln's Climate Action Plan. And I just wanted to say a few words about the context and process behind the plan. First, I want to make sure you know that Lincoln is not alone in developing a climate action plan. Around the country and around the globe, cities, states, and corporations and counties are making commitments to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, transition to renewable energy, and increase their resilience to climate change. And as a consultant who works with clients all over the country on these issues, I can tell you that there is a groundswell of momentum for climate action. The reason these local governments and corporations are taking climate planning so seriously is that climate change is an existential threat to our way of life, to our budgets, to our infrastructure, to our economies, and to our public health. You may know that the Nebraska Legislature is currently discussing a bill that would create a climate action plan for the whole state of Nebraska. And as the Omaha World Herald Editorial Board put it last Friday, "It's eminently sensible for Nebraska to develop a climate action plan that sets out practical coordinated strategies for reducing the state's vulnerability to climate-related harm." We felt exactly that same way in approaching Lincoln's Climate Action Plan, that it was eminently sensible to develop a plan that would allow our community to avoid risk and to continue to thrive in spite of future changes. Public engagement was key to the way in which the plan was developed. We knew that a participatory consensus-based process would achieve the best plan for Lincoln. This was not a process by which the consultants came in with all the answers, but instead it was one in which the problems and the solutions were identified by the stakeholder groups themselves. As consultants, we then took that information and refined it in an iterative way for each step of the process. There were four main stakeholder groups that took part in the planning process. First was a Climate Resiliency Task Force, which was a group of around 40 members of the Lincoln community who represented a range of sectors important to reducing emissions and building resilience. The individuals on this task force intentionally represented a wide diversity of interests in our community. Some of the groups represented were LES, UNL, Lancaster County Emergency Services, large business owners who were also Liba members, the insurance industry, and the city's planning department. But the task force also included historically marginalized communities, with representatives from the Center for People in Need, the Asian Community and Cultural Center, Collective Impact Lincoln, and Aging Partners. The second stakeholder group was the City Staff Sustainability Working Group, which was a group of about a dozen city staff members who provided technical expertise for the plan. The third was the Mayor's Environmental Task Force, which is a group of about 150 citizens who meet monthly and provided valuable input and advice. And finally, the public was engaged in a public survey, in meetings with several local community groups, and via an online feedback portal. I am pleased to report that this plan has been very positively received by the community. To date, over 33 local organizations have endorsed this plan, along with the editorial board of the Lincoln Journal-Star and scores of individual residents. This plan has been developed specifically for Lincoln. It is not a cookie-cutter list of general recommendations, but instead a highly specific set of recommendations that are unique to Lincoln. In every instance, we started with local data and developed recommendations tailored to Lincoln's unique situation. In particular, the plan includes city-specific climate projection data, so the ways that our climate will change are not the same as the ways that North Platte or Ogalala's climate will change, so it's specific to our geographical location. It also includes a local climate vulnerability assessment, which involved understanding how vulnerabilities will be created through the unique combination of Lincoln's future climate, our watershed and topography, our previous risk areas, our demographic factors, and our community characteristics. It also included Lincoln's unique resources, our universities, our community college, our K-12 school district, and the strength of our social networks. And finally, the plan puts forward local solutions that will enable Lincoln to become a climate-smart city. And finally, in the creation of this plan, we took an intentional approach to understanding climate vulnerabilities through an environmental justice lens. Environmental justice looks at the ways that historically marginalized groups of people have most often borne the most severe consequences of environmental degradation. In Lincoln's case, we looked carefully at where our floodplain map aligns with high poverty areas in our community, and unfortunately found that areas with the highest flood risk are also those with the fewest resources to respond to catastrophe. We also looked at areas where languages other than English are spoken, where the elderly live, and where access to food is low. These neighborhoods in Lincoln show us where we can focus our climate resiliency efforts in coming months and years. The coronavirus pandemic, which occurred during the middle of this cap planning process, actually revealed several issues that informed our climate planning as well. Those include the fact that vulnerable populations will be the hardest hit. This has been true of COVID, and it is also true of climate change. But COVID has also shown us that one of the greatest strengths in Lincoln is our community connectedness. Studies have actually shown that communities with a high degree of social capital, that is, the number and strength of relationships among people in a community, are those communities that are best able to respond to a disaster. In fact, the studies have found that social capital is even more important than financial capital in disaster recovery. So the kinds of volunteer programs that we've developed here in Lincoln during the pandemic, and the ways that neighbors have helped neighbors during this past year, are the same kinds of programs and efforts that we can continue to build on to help Lincolnites recover from climate impacts in the future. We are proud of the kind and connected community we have here in Lincoln, and this Climate Action Plan will build on that strength, among many others, to ensure that Lincoln is a climate-smart city of the future. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Miki.
So, we have some housekeeping items that I wanted to make sure that I touch base with you on. Hopefully, you have seen the proposed amendments. This is an outcome of working closely with the development community, as well as H-Ball, making some language tweaks on behalf of LES, and then additional clarification that was needed, amendments and corrections that were needed. So I wanted to make sure that you have those in front of you, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer specifically about that. The next one is really to talk about where we are in the process, and I want to talk a little bit about how iterative the city's process is. This is just incredibly important for people to understand. When we are building public policy, which is what this is, we don't exactly, it's not exactly customary to have detailed cost information for you, including rates. This is not a rate resolution, it's not a budget resolution, it's not an ask for additional funding today, but rather, at this time, we are in the public policy planning phase. So the call of the question today, the legislative question before you, is whether the Climate Action Plan aligns with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Does it conform to the vision the city has for itself? And the Planning Commission voted 7 to 0 unanimously that it does, in fact, conform to the 2040 Comp Plan. So it's aspirational, and it's going in the right direction that our city has planned for itself since 2040. So this step, and your vote today, is really a prerequisite for the next one, which is to conduct more investigation, have more dialogue, do more public outreach, do more cost and rate analysis, to turn public policy into a funding decision. Public funding always, that debate always happens after public policy is shaped. I know you know that, but for folks who may not, I wanted to make sure I emphasized that the city goes through an iterative democratic process and doesn't just jump to public funding decisions before it goes through those steps. So, a question was raised during the budget process. You know, what is the cost of all of this? What is the cost to do something? And specifically, I don't have information for you on what impacts it will have to taxpayers, because we just aren't at that phase. But I can point to history, and I can point to the decisions that this body has made in the past for that information, and how we've made prudent decisions financially, as well as infrastructure investments. So Antelope Valley is a great example of that. Estimates of downtown flooding when we would have those events were about $1 billion per event. Damage, that doesn't just include damage to city infrastructure, but to homes and people in the floodplain. The total project cost was $225 million. The Lincoln Water System drought mitigation, in 2012, as you all know, we suffered a severe drought, and there was a comprehensive plan to stand up two horizontal collector wells. We wanted to bring those projects forward to the city council for investment. We made a $22.9 million investment to mitigate drought at that time, and the commensurate rate increase in 2014 did not exceed 5%. And in fact, from 2011 to 2020, on a 10-year fiscal years, the average rate increase per year has been 4.7%. And then finally, just the prudence of Lincoln Electric System. Their renewables investment from 2010 to 2019, they went from 8% in power generated from sustainable sources to 46%. And since 2010, LES's annual system-wide rate increases have averaged just over 1%. Since 2015, they've averaged about 0.5% annually, with no system-wide rate increases since 2017. And so what I'm trying to indicate here is that public funding decisions, again, are iterative, and they always come back to this body as the arbiter of budget decisions, rate resolutions, bond issuances. And that process is yet to come, and this step in amending the Comp Plan is a prerequisite to all of that investigation. I also wanted just to touch on estimates for the second source of water supply, because it also serves as an example of the additional investigation we still have to do. We have two options. These are the 2019 estimates. One is to go to the Missouri River, one is to interconnect with MUD. And I just want to note that if we wait until 2045, these cost projections are headed upward to $1.2 billion. But here's the thing, this may not be all on our local taxpayers. We want to be able to start a process of working with our federal partners and our state partners for funding to assist us in making this determination. So we haven't yet explored what the project, actually, the project scoped is. We haven't explored what the funding mechanisms are. And until we have those options costed out and further investigated, we really can't get to the point of telling you how this will impact rates. But what I know from history is that this body has made incredibly prudent decisions about investments, mitigating risk, and making the infrastructure investments that we need while remaining competitive and affordable. The cost to do nothing is kind of a similar approach. We have a lot of examples of doing nothing here that I can point to. The 2014 and 2015 Salt Creek Watershed Flood, the estimates were almost $8 million in damages to property. That mostly occurred to neighborhoods and property owners, and you could see the evacuations that were occurring in 14 and 15 as a result. March 2019 flood damage and restoration, it's a good way to assess an unexpected event that happened on the platte. It impacted lots of people across Nebraska. The total cost for flood damage restoration is $15.9 million. We'll get a recovery from insurance of about $3.5 million. Our current NEMA and FEMA recovery to date is $300,000, just over that, but we should get about 75% of the proceeds back. And then today, as it sits, our current net liability is $12 million. But again, the caveat is that FEMA and NEMA should be reimbursing us about 75%. March 2019 flood damage and restoration, it's a good way to assess an unexpected event that happened on the plat. It impacted lots of people across Nebraska. The total cost for flood damage restoration is $15.9 million. We'll get a recovery from insurance of about $3.5 million. Our current NEMA and FEMA recovery to date is $300,000, just over that, but we should get about 75% of the proceeds back. And then today, as it sits, our current net liability is $12 million. But again, the caveat is that FEMA and NEMA should be reimbursing us about 75%. The flood damage in Nebraska in 2019 across the state was $3.4 billion. The 2019 flood damage for the region was $6.2 billion. And finally, there's a handout that I just wanted to make sure you saw again. We shared this during budget. But I'll just note here that from 1980 to 1998, in Nebraska, there were eight events, eight severe weather events, that totaled over $8 million. So these, per event, it's $1 billion and over per event. From 1998 to 2020, the amount of events quadrupled, more than quadrupled. We had 35 total events, total disasters, that exceeded that billion-dollar mark. So the increase in frequency, the increase in severity, the increase in cost, and the increase in loss, not just in cost, but lives and livelihood, is playing out here in Nebraska. So we went from eight events to 35. So we're really wanting to take climate action today. We know that there are lots of process and more conversation to have, and that's what the amendments really reflect for you. But climate change is happening, it's dangerous and costly, and we know that with our sustainability efforts, climate action works. Our residents support taking action, and there are advantages to us for taking action now. So with that, Kim and I are here to answer any questions that you have, or we can cut to our public testimony and people who are here to testify.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Sessizito? Okay. We reserve the right to call you back up.
Sounds fine. Thank you so much.
You bet. And we can start with the public hearing. Sony, you gonna call them up?
Yes. I'll be calling by order of sign-in.
Yes.
Okay. For public testimony on item 5A, first up is Jim Cook. Next would be Ken Han.
Ken Hart.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Jim Cook, and my address is 820 Upton Gray Lane. I'm here to support the action on the Climate Action Plans. To give you a little bit of background, I belong to St. Paul United Methodist Church in downtown Lincoln, and I'm a member of the church's new climate justice team that we just formed, actually, last fall. The other members of the team are the Reverend David Lux, Carmen Maurer, Lynn Fritz, and Patty Bullhart. Our team's mission is to educate our church members, and in concert with others, the Lincoln community about, one, climate change and the pressing need to take action to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and, two, how to prepare our community for climate changes that will still occur, notwithstanding what we hope will be a concerted global effort toward that same goal. One of the early tasks we assigned ourselves was the review of what has been reworked and relabeled as Lincoln's Vision for a Climate Smart Future. Having finished that review, as well as a review of the recently released 2021 to 2027 Climate Action Plan, we compliment the city for addressing this important subject and for developing such comprehensive plans. We enthusiastically support your approval of those plans. The proposed long-range plan includes an extraordinary list of strategies and potential actions that can be implemented to meet the joint goals of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and enhancing Lincoln's resiliency to the climate hazards that will still be faced. The ongoing challenge will be to select those strategies and actions that will provide the most benefit and that will meet with public acceptance. Our review of the 2021 to 2027 plan indicates that the initial selection process met that challenge, and we endorse the key initiatives identified in the short-term plan. We acknowledge the importance of individual and community education regarding the climate crisis and the proposed action plans. We offer our team at St. Paul as participants in that educational dialogue. In fact, we would suggest a modification of Initiative 120 to specifically include faith communities and other climate-focused interest groups in a list of partners in the educational effort. We invite you to view the climate-related educational opportunities we are currently offering. Those can be found on the church's website at saintpaulumc.org, under Justice and Mercy, and then under Climate Justice Classes. Those options will be updated as we identify new educational opportunities. Thank you for the opportunity to provide our thoughts.
Thank you for coming down.
Hello, I'm gonna take just a minute here to...
He's gonna help you set that up for you.
Oops, sir. You got it?
Yep.
Okay. Plug me in. Technology's wonderful.
And then, yeah, you'll just need to...
Yeah. Oops, sorry. My name is Ken Har, and I live at 1808 Folkways Boulevard here in Lincoln, and I was on the City Council from 1880...
1880?
Some days it feels like that.
You're doing awful well, Ken.
You look pretty good, Ken.
For an old man, I look pretty good.
Yeah.
So, I was on the City Council for eight years, and then from 2009 through 2016, I was in Nebraska Legislature. And so I want to say, first of all, thank you for serving. I know the kind of time it takes to do a good job, and wow, you put in a lot of time, and the pay is not great. We only got $1,000 a month, so that was even worse. Well, obviously, I support the plan, and I've watched various, I watched the Planning Commission hearing and the candidates forum, and I just need to clear up some things that I heard. First of all, and this circulated some, that LES had said that with that goal of 2040, the rates would double. That's not the case. And so, early on, I sent an email to Scott Benson, and I said, "It was my understanding," because I was at the meeting where LES talked about going to 2030 as the 100% date, and I said, "My understanding was that 2030 would double the rates with current technology." Really important. 2030, if we had to make the date, if we had to make it to net zero by 2030, it would double the cost. But that's not what LES passed. They passed the goal of 2040. And so I sent that email to Scott, and he said, "Your memory is correct." I did a presentation as part of LES Board Decarbonization Goal, and said LES rates would essentially double if we had to meet a near-zero 2030 goal, knowing what we know today. So I think that's really important to clarify. We're not talking about doubling the rates. Another thing that came up was, and this is kind of a quote from one of the people, "Texas is a good example of why we shouldn't be investing in more renewables." And there have been so many articles written about that, and I'd just like to quote this from a local view in the Journal Star. "Texas chose to go it alone, in part to avoid federal regulations. Texas isn't interconnected with anybody else. Despite warnings, Texas chose not to be prepared for cold weather, and now Texans are asking, where was the government oversight?" So Texas was not prepared because they chose not to be prepared. I think it's important to say that. And then somebody brought up the point, they said, "Renewables produce too much waste." Well, if you look at the production, the operation, including fuel, and the decommissioning of any kind of electricity generation costs money, but it's far less for wind and solar. So I think those things needed to get said. So then I want to go to a question, is, who do you trust? Now, I tend to trust science. I have a science background, and I found on the internet, and this is from the California Governor's Office of Planning and Research, 200 scientific organizations that hold the position that climate change has been caused by humans. And I'm not going to read all 200 to you, but I'm going to read some of these. The American Association for the Advancement of Science, the American Chemical Society, the American Institute of Physics, the American Public Health Association, the Environmental Protection Agency, and on and on. In all, there are about 60 scientific organizations, professional organizations in this country that have all taken the position that, yes, climate change is happening, and that humans are the main cause. Well, if you don't trust scientists, then I want you to look at this other thing that I passed out. And this is a letter from Larry Fink. Now, if you haven't heard of Larry Fink...
Your time's about up.
What, time's about up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We got three minutes, right? I thought it was five, I'm sorry.
You had five.
Okay. So please look at this, a letter from Larry Fink. Larry is the CEO of a company that manages $9 trillion, $9 trillion of public assets. And in this letter, Larry talks to the people whose assets he controls and talks to them about climate change, and it's really revealing. Larry knows the case, and if you can't trust science, trust Larry Fink. Thank you very much.
Next up is Brandy Johnson.
Who's up after that?
And Doug Dittman, after Ms. Johnson.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Brandy Johnson. I am a Lincoln resident, and I'm here on behalf of Black Hills Energy at 1731 Wind Hook Drive, on behalf of our 100,000, approximately, Lincoln and Lancaster County customers that we serve. And we are thankful for the opportunity to participate in the development of the Climate Action Plan and provide feedback and insight into the final recommendation to help inform our shared sustainability and resiliency goals. We support pursuing all sensible paths to reducing emissions and providing affordable, safe, and reliable energy for our customers today and tomorrow. We are a partner in ensuring and assisting with the sustainability of this community. Last year, Black Hills Energy announced that we had a sustainability goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions intensity by 50%, and we are joining the EPA's Methane Challenge. The energy that we deliver drives growth and ensures resiliency in our community. Sustainability and reducing greenhouse gas emissions will require partnership among clean energy sources like renewables and natural gas, and smart use of our country's infrastructure, and continued careful investment in the impact to the members of this community. The cleanest energy is the energy we never use, and we appreciate the plan's recommendations and proposals towards energy efficiency, partnerships, and continuing to support the renewable natural gas initiatives that we've begun in this community. And we appreciate that there is an aspirational, yet achievable and realistic approach, and we are looking forward to providing support to the city as they achieve these goals. We know the collaborative approach that was taken as a part of developing the plan. I was a part of two of the stakeholder groups, and we appreciate that that will continue as the plan is implemented. Specifically, the items that we are supporting are related to the incentive-based program for the direct use of high-efficiency natural gas appliances for space and water heating, and we are also interested in continuing to develop and identify renewable natural gas and biogas projects within the city. And we hope that the city will continue to evaluate RNG and compressed natural gas usage in the heavy-duty vehicles, like additional garbage trucks and buses and the trolleys here in Lincoln. And we know that natural gas is an affordable and essential part of a clean energy future, and it has significantly reduced our country's carbon emissions. Through the use of new technologies, we know that natural gas will continue to shrink our country's carbon footprint, and we appreciate the plan's recognition that natural gas is an important fuel choice for our residents and businesses. And we will continue to advocate for the ability of our customers to choose the fuel that they believe best meets their needs, whether it's for residential heating or cooking, or for new buildings, businesses, and restaurants. And we recognize that there is some uncertainty around various aspects of the plan, including some potential costs for some initiatives, and we are requesting that we continue to have the opportunity to be involved in the discussions around the plan as we look to implement different pieces of it. We have a shared goal of reducing emissions, and we know that natural gas is a fuel method to achieve our goal of reducing carbon emissions. So I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here today and the continued important work you have in shaping life here in our community.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Okay.
All right. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Doug Dittman, up next, Marilyn McNabb.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak before the City Council today. My name is Doug Dittman, and I have lived and farmed in northwestern Lancaster County for the last 30 years, and also I have Hub Cafe, a farm-to-table restaurant located at 21st and Q in Union Plaza. I'm grateful for the thought and the vision and the work that went into the Lincoln Climate Action Plan, and I'm here speaking in favor of it. Resolving climate change-related issues requires town-and-country partnerships. Lincoln cannot succeed without Lancaster County, and Lancaster County cannot succeed without Lincoln. We are intertwined. We're fortunate that Lancaster County has more small and mid-sized farms than any other of Nebraska's counties. We can leverage this to our advantage. Surrounding farms and farmers can grow more of our food, generate more of our electricity, impound floodwaters, increase ecologically diverse habitats, and maintain open landscapes and view sheds. Home to trails and accessible creeks and lakes, we need each other if we're to succeed. Now for the hard part. With strong and forward-thinking leadership from the City Council, and ultimately throughout state government, can build the framework for a sustainable, actually a livable, future. Then, the people themselves, we, after accepting the challenges that climate change means for us and future generations, we must apply ourselves with creativity and hard work. The devastating drought of 2012 brought this issue of climate change into focus for me personally. I knew my dairy could survive a year, maybe two, maybe three, of equivalent heat and drought, but the predictions of 2012 conditions becoming status quo in the second half of this century, I realized that future generations are threatened. Accordingly, I converted from row crop agriculture to pasture-based farming, and opened a creamery and marketed dairy products locally. Also, we opened the Hub Cafe, a farm-to-table restaurant with the commitment of marketing Lancaster and local products, and continue that commitment to this day. The good news is that through creativity and hard work, we can meet the challenges of climate change, and if we're smart about it and committed, I believe we can create an even better future. There is the possibility of great meaning, and yes, even joy in this work. As a fifth-generation Lincoln and Lancaster County resident, I'm committed to doing everything I can to ensure a good place to live for five more. Approving this plan is an essential step forward. Thank you for your work, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Doug.
Marilyn McNabb, up next, Steve Bowen.
Good afternoon, council. Thank you for giving us this chance to talk about this very important subject. I'm Marilyn McNabb. I live at 1701 West Rose Street in Lincoln. I'm speaking for the Board of Wachuska, which is the local chapter of the Audubon Society. Wachuska Audubon represents 17 counties in southeast Nebraska. We're the local chapter for 985 national Audubon members. The Wachuska Chapter of Audubon supports the adoption of the Six-Year Climate Action Plan into the city's comprehensive planning. Plan into the city's comprehensive plan for 2040. Why do bird lovers care about climate change? National Audubon has done its own peer-reviewed study of the effects of climate change on North American birds. It found that climate change puts 384 species on the brink of extinction. The main reason is that climate change forces birds to change their range, and many cannot survive that change. The Climate Action Plan addresses the cause of climate change with its goal to reduce greenhouse gases emissions net 80% by 2050 compared to 2011 levels. It lists strategies that will increase the use of renewable energy and reduce use of energy use overall through energy efficiency in both public and private sectors. Adopting and meeting these goals will contribute to the survival of birds and whole species of birds. There's a second series of initiatives which directly affect birds. Numbers 99 through 109 uphold the value of native plants and trees. Uding natives in the ways listed is invaluable to birds. Young birds need the caterpillars that their parents bring home, and there are caterpillars available only on native plants and trees. Also, Wachuska has put in a lot of effort in prairie preservation, starting with the work of Ernie Russek to preserve Nine Mile Prairie. We're pleased to see prairie restoration is supported in these recommendations. I want to say a brief word about politics. We don't support candidates or participate in political campaigns. We're bipartisan. Audubon's 1.9 million members are 53% progressive and 47% moderate or conservative. 75% of all Audubon members, including a majority of moderate and conservative members, rank climate change as one of the top concerns among all issues facing America today. Audubon members across the political spectrum are committed to climate solutions that are durable. Audubon's leadership likes to point out that birds are telling us there is no time to lose. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Steve Bowen, up next, Megan McGuffey.
Can I have eight minutes?
Yeah. Nice try. No.
All right, I'll give you the short version. I offer this testimony as a person with specific expertise and experience relative to electric utilities and electric power plants. I served on the LES Board for nine years, being the chairman of the Board for two terms, 1996 and 1997. I was a design-build electrical contractor for most of my career. I have recently been a professor of practice at the University of Nebraska College of Engineering from 2012 until last year. During my time as electrical contractor, I had been the construction manager on many electric utility projects and power plants. And so I'm abbreviating part of this. In 1997, approximately 95% of LES's energy was generated from coal or nuclear. Today, you can divide that into thirds. Coal's about a third, gas, natural gas is about a third, renewables is about a third. Most of those renewables being wind turbines. In addition, LES is now a member of the Southwest Power Pool. Membership in the Southwest Power Pool has been a game changer for LES. All energy generated by LES-controlled resources, along with many other members of the SPP, go into a generation mix that is then distributed out to its members. By pooling their resources, this arrangement is beneficial to the SPP members on several levels. There are also rules that each member must contractually comply with, or they are penalized with additional monetary costs or sanctions. The SPP has determined through engineering and experience that wind and solar power production is unreliable. Unreliable in respect to the capacity of the power source. I have a quote in the handout that you can, that you can later read, but it talks about the nameplate capacity value, which refers to 100% capacity of the power source. Consequently, the SPP will derate the power generation capacity of wind and solar by 65%. That's how they handle it now. That's 35% multiplier. And that's reasonable, by the way. Since LES has a major component of wind in its portfolio, this will affect the ability for LES to meet their obligations with the SPP. LES has a decarbonization goal. LES intends to rely almost entirely on wind and solar for their energy resources. LES currently participates in a number of coal and natural gas power plants, and in the past with the Cooper Nuclear Power Plant. After LES, after LES has severed participation in these power plants, those power plants and any new additional power plants will still be operating. It stands to reason that those carbon-based power plants will still be providing power to the SPP and their membership. Since LES is a member of the SPP, we will still receive power from carbon and nuclear energy sources. So LES's decarbonization goal will not significantly reduce any carbon emissions. That's a fact. In fact, the opposite is probably true. As LES moves towards...
One minute.
One minute. All right. I'm going to skip a bunch of things. But basically, what I'm going to say here, unless LES and the City of Lincoln goes down a different path, we will indeed experience rotating controlled outages or worse in the future. When this happens, many facilities within our city will automatically run and use their electrical standby generators, usually fueled by diesel or natural gas. It stands to reason that more businesses and residences will feel the need to install standby electric generators. If the City of Lincoln, if the City Lincoln Council resolution is passed and pursued, the citizens and businesses of Lincoln, Nebraska will experience significant power outages. The cost of electrical energy will increase significantly, and we will actually experience a significant increase in pollution.
Can you finish up?
I can finish up. Two more paragraphs. This, of course, will have a huge detrimental effect on the quality of life in the city. It will make our businesses less competitive on a national and international basis. Education will be diminished on many levels. But the big thing is, is the most unfortunate among us will suffer the most. So I urge you not to vote for this resolution because it needs to be fixed. Any questions?
Thank you.
The handout that you have, there are links after my signature, and everything I told you is factual.
Handout's back in the office. We'll get it out to you. You have a quick question?
Oh, sure.
You said it needs to be fixed. How would you fix it?
Well, well, they only asked me in a big mistake when they, when, when they determined that they're going to be carbon-free. I don't know why. It never would have happened when I was there. I don't know what they're thinking. I, apparently, they don't know. They don't know what they're, they're doing, I think. Without... One way to explain it is, is when, when you see a wind farm and you see the blades turning. People have a tendency to think that, by golly, that, that wind farm is producing power at full capacity. But it's not like a coal-fired power plant. It's not like a natural gas power plant. It's not like a nuclear power plant. It's producing as much power as the wind is available. So, so the reason that the SPP considers wind unreliable is, is it seldom matches its nameplate rating. So if you have 100-megawatt wind farm, they're going to rate it at 35 megawatts. And, and so, and that's about right. I, I agree with that. So, so that's one of the biggest problems. If all we have is, is wind, then when the wind don't blow and the sun don't shine, we don't have any power. In addition, if the wind gets to a certain level, you know, last few days it's been really windy, too windy for a wind turbine to operate. They got to feather the blades and shut things down because there's, there's just too much wind. And, and the unit can't handle it, or it'll get damaged. I don't know if that answered your question, but it needs to be fixed. We need to have a good mix of power generation.
Thank you.
The world's not ready for just pure wind.
Thank you. Who do we have next?
I'm going to move my computer.
Yeah, you want to grab your stuff? You just want to move it up there?
Megan McGuffey, up next would be Samuel Lyon.
Good afternoon, members of the Council. My name is Megan McGuffey, and I'm speaking on behalf of Community Crops, 1301 South 11th Street, 68502. It is critical that building a resilient local food system is one of the key areas of action in this plan. While we're not the first community to do this, it shows that we understand the food system is like the water system or the transportation system, an integral part of planning for a healthy city. This plan helps our government move from a regulatory role to a more active role in promoting food security so that Lincoln has a brighter future. Food security can be thought of on two levels, both of which this plan addresses. Individual and household food security means that no family in Lincoln is going hungry or making unacceptable trade-offs in their diets. Before the pandemic, roughly 12% of Lincoln families were food insecure. We don't know the exact numbers since the pandemic, but we know the situation has gotten worse, and it's going to take a long time to recover. Taking this up a level, community food security means we have a resilient food supply that can adapt quickly when disruptions occur. This industrialized food system we've created is highly efficient in moving food around the globe, but it's also incredibly fragile. We're an agricultural powerhouse that's a net importer of our food, and our grocery stores have about a three-day supply of food in case of disruption. Relocalizing a portion of our food supply builds redundancies into the system so that we can handle whatever challenges lie ahead. One last advantage to increasing local food production and purchasing, I'll mention, is the economic multiplier effect of buying local. This allows us to recapture millions of dollars for the local economy. I'd like to end my remarks with a food analogy, if you'll allow me. It's kind of the trade of the business. This plan is like a restaurant menu. When you sit down to dine on any one visit, you're not going to order everything on the menu. And at the same point, you're not going to always have, you know, one visit, you might have filet money, the next visit, you might have, split an appetizer and enjoy the complimentary bread. So I know this plan is big, and it's ambitious, and it's complex, and we might have differences in how we want to implement it, and I think that's okay. It gives us a broad variety of actions to choose from at any given moment with the resources that we have available. So with that, I urge you to support the adoption of the plan. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, next.
Samuel Lyon, up next would be Rick Kruger.
Samuel Lyon, Lincoln, Nebraska. Can't wait for those rolling blackouts, as the previous testifier warned of. Last week, I sat in that chair as this body voted to send a message to the state of Nebraska and the federal government. That message: You need help. You're in a situation that is beyond your capabilities. You don't have enough money to make ends meet. That was the message that this body voted six to one to send to the state and federal government last week. This week, it appears that you have an unlimited amount of money. That money is no object because you are being asked to vote on a resolution that could end up costing this city billions over the next 30 years. Billions of dollars that so far, as Mickey Esperido testified, has not been accounted for. Where will it come from? Who will pay for it? In the end, we know it's your constituents that will pay for it. Last week, this body also voted to suspend rules in an effort to push forward a resolution aimed at bringing more affordable rentals to Lincoln by building row housing in the cemetery. A lack of affordable housing is a crisis in Lincoln, but this climate plan is a direct attack on affordable housing and on low-income families on the whole. This plan will increase property taxes. This plan will increase building costs. This plan will increase utility costs and building fees. Those costs will be an inconvenience for you and for me and for others in the middle to upper income, but they will be devastating for low-income families. The mayor released a propaganda video last week where children were allowed to read pre-written softball questions about her plan. In that video, it was mentioned that without this plan, we will continue to have winters with sub-zero degree temps. While I would love a future devoid of winters with sub-zero degree temps, I have significant doubts that this plan will achieve that or that we would be better off if it did. It also alleged that without this plan, our seasons will go away, but also, at the same time, our seasons will be more extreme than ever. Let's think about that for a second. Our seasons will go away, and they will be more extreme. What the mayor didn't want to talk about in that video, just as Mickey avoided today, is the total cost of this plan. What the mayor didn't tell those children was that they would likely be forced to pay two to three times the cost of housing as their parents are paying right now. And their parents are paying almost double the cost of housing as their parents. 15 to 20 years ago, it was not out of the question to find a two-bedroom rental for $450 in Lincoln. But now, that price has almost doubled to $900 a month for the same unit. How can the mayor pretend to be concerned with low-income housing and then propose a catastrophic plan such as this? Affordable housing is not just the cost of rent or of your mortgage, it's the total cost of having a place to live. That cost includes utilities. And as we heard, LES estimates that in order to achieve the electricity requirements of this plan, we have been told electricity costs will double, if not by 2030, then by 2040. If the water system is required to spend that estimated almost billion dollars on a new redundant water source, how much do you think it will raise the water bill? Today, Lincoln Water System sends an invoice every other month because the costs are low enough to accommodate that. But no longer. Once this plan takes effect, a larger bill will arrive at each of your constituents' doorsteps each month. So where does that leave the people of Lincoln if you approve this plan? Double the electric bill by 2040, double the water bill, double the rent, higher cost to build, which means less homeowners will be afforded owning a home. At a time when homeownership is the one metric that you should be focusing on, as that is the real vehicle needed to escape poverty and increase personal wealth. And you should know that better than anyone. For instance, Jane, when you purchased your home, it was worth $259,000. And today, its preliminary value is $491,000. Just the difference between the purchase price and the current valuation of each of your combined personal residences is more than half a million dollars in wealth that you have from owning a piece of property rather than renting. I would love to see less sub-zero winters, but I don't think that we will see those. We will see, we will continue to see seasons come and go as they should. Unfortunately, many of our neighbors won't be here to see them because they will have been forced to leave Lincoln for a more affordable place to live.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Any questions? Okay. Next.
Rick...
Kruger.
Kruger, thank you, sir. Rick Kruger, sorry. Rick Kruger, up next is Roy Helm.
Thank you. The last time I was here addressing the council, I talked in favor of the Soto Plan there of south, south of downtown. Because I do agree that that is a good part of the mayor's housing affordability plan, and so I'm very much for it. This plan, I think, runs contrary to the affordability and housing concepts that government has put forward. And I wanna specifically focus on the Salt Creek portion of the plan. I have real concerns about this resiliency study. And I'll make sure that I tell you it's not because of the guy that wrote it. I've known him for some years, and he's a fine fellow. But, by the way, if you don't read this, if you don't have to, because it's really boring. But this resiliency study is based on a future estimate of rainfall, page 65, where he says, "The results presented in this study were obtained using reliable engineering methods and reasonable judgment, but do not in any way constitute approved levels of future discharges and/or flood elevations." Okay, well, that's kind of a red flag for me. Then he goes on to say in, on page 80, that there is a high margin for error on page 80. He talks about that. And this is where it appears to me that we're gonna be designing for an additional increase in the annual flood event of 2.2 feet. Now, 2.2 feet is a lot. But evidently, there were seven different methodologies they could use. They went to the mean, the middle one, which came out to 2.2 feet, 26 inches. And so this is, this is of great concern because if you're in the floodplain now and something happens to your house and all of a sudden you're having to elevate it up instead of maybe a foot, you're elevating it up three foot. There's a whole bunch of things that are gonna happen if this goes through. And then on page 81, "There is uncertainty in climate modeling. The models vary in how they predict flood risk changing for the Salt Creek watershed." So you've got a presumption, an assumption, and another assumption, and then the result. And so we don't know what the effects of all of this is gonna be in the private sector. And I've been working here in the private sector for construction and development for 46 years. And I believe this is, this would be, if it's put in the comprehensive plan, it becomes the foundation document for future regulations. And we all know that regulators like to regulate. And so maybe we have wider corridors for the waters to run in. Who knows? We don't know. And that's one of the concerns I have. By the way, Salt Creek is pretty much built out for the most part. What worries me more than anything is if we start doing this over in Stevens Creek, which I believe is the city's future. So we're talking about increased regulation and set-asides. In response to my question during a Zoom call, staff indicated, both at the mayor's office and then in Public Works, that they would increase the set-aside land requirements in the reaches of the creek. That, in other words, just take it right on up, you know, not just a floodplain, but all the way on up. This, for sure, will decrease the density of future subdivisions, and that will increase the cost of land per dwelling unit. Out there at 84th Street, south of Yankee Hill, we're doing the woodlands. And we have two reaches that, one of them 80-foot wide and one of them is 70-foot wide for the water to run down. Now, a standard street, for the dozens of people that are watching at home, I'll be quick, is only 60-foot wide. So we're already bigger than a street, and we're going to be increasing that. There is no cost-benefit analysis in this study. The cost will primarily be borne by the private sector, and the built environment moves up in sympathy with what, for housing costs with what happens in the growth areas of the city. That's just a fact. And that's how it will affect housing. Is it gonna be super bad or kinda bad? We don't know. Finally, we, about 10, 12 years ago, we said that all new streets, especially arterials, should be out of the floodplain. If you go down to Pine Lake, from the railroad tracks to 70, you can see that's been elevated out of the floodplain. And it's up. If you look where the fire station is, they brought in a bunch of dirt. It's a great example of building in the floodplain, by the way. But what happens if that, all of a sudden, is two-foot, two inches increased? We don't know. Now, I sit on the mayor's task force for streets, trying to figure this stuff out. I have no clarity on this going forward. So I bring these concerns to you. That's, these are issues that happen, and I've run out of time, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kruger. Any questions? No? Yeah, we have one.
Mr. Kruger, thank you for coming down. And I have a question. You kept referring to page numbers, and the page numbers are in the larger climate.
No, they're in the resiliency study, in the executive summary.
For the Salt Creek.
For the Salt Creek, yeah. That's what I needed to focus on.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? Nope, thank you, Mr. Kruger.
Roy Helm. Up next is Earl Wayne Bowles.
Good afternoon. Roy Helm, 2750 South 13th Street. I'm supporting the Climate Action Plan, and I hope that you all do as well. I want to thank the mayor and her office for including a lot of outreach, community input, in putting together this plan and listening to the constituency. This is an important item. It's, quite frankly, long overdue. We have taken great pains to destroy the planet we live on, and now we need to take great pains and sacrifice to do what we can to build it back. We have an ability to do that. This action plan is a good first start. I'm not an educated person. I don't have facts and figures in front of me, and I'm not well-read on the ins and outs and the specifics of the climate plan. But I do know that we have an obligation to do something. And that something is to reduce the carbon gases. We need to change our, the way that we generate and harvest energy. This is a good first step. We have a long way to go. Our planet is dying, and we'll be dying with it. This is, goes beyond being a scientific issue. This is a moral issue. This is an obligation that we have. This life that we live and life that we have was bestowed upon us. And we're on this earth, and we are caretakers. And it's time that we started to act like caretakers. So I respectfully request that you all support the Climate Action Plan, and I will thank you in advance for doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Next up.
Earl Wayne Bowles. Up next would be Scott Benson.
One for you and one for each of you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I live 13th and He Street, above the Rococo Theater. Just me and 300 books and a computer. Esteemed and beloved friends, thank you for your willingness to serve our citizens. When Henry Ford invented the Ford, he didn't know what carbon emissions would cause. Thomas Edison, who eventually had 1,093 patents, didn't know his research could eventually address the carbon emissions issue. In 1912, Henry asked Thomas to design a battery for Henry's Model T Ford, which Thomas did. Thus began a very long relationship. I have a six-pages report from the National Aeronautics and Space Administration Jet Propulsion Laboratory, managed by the California Institute of Technology, for each of you to read. I haven't checked to see if you are, if you know how to read, but it's available. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read just a few quotes, and then this thing will beep. And can you hear me?
Yeah.
Scientists attribute the global warming trend observed since the mid-20th century to the human expansion of the greenhouse effect, warning that results when the atmosphere traps heat radiating from Earth towards space. There are gases that contribute to the greenhouse effect, and there are, I believe there are five diff, yeah, five different gases. But the, but the most dangerous one is carbon dioxide, CO2. A minor but very important component of the atmosphere, carbon dioxide is released through natural processes such as respiration and volcano eruptions and through human activities such as deforestation, land use changes, and burning fossil fuels. All right, we're guilty, our ancestors are guilty. The humans have increased atmospheric CO2 concentration by 47% since the Industrial Revolution began. This is the most important, long-lived forcing of climate change. I'll interrupt myself by saying that regarding LES, Mr. Scott Benson, who is the manager, resource and transmission planning at LES, when I was talking to him about eventually cars being mostly electric, he said, "When they're ready, LES will be ready." He, I think he knows what he's talking about. They're not ready now for every car to be LES, but they will be ready. Over the last century, the burning of fossil fuels like coal and oil has increased the concentration of atmospheric carbon dioxide, or the CO2. Climate extremes, such as droughts, floods, and extreme temperatures can lead to crop losses and threaten the livelihoods of agricultural producers and the food security of communities worldwide. And in conclusion, finally, although rising CO2 can stimulate plant growth, research has shown that it can also reduce the nutritional value of most food crops by reducing the concentrations of protein and essential minerals in most plant species. So we have to do something. I'm in favor of doing something.
Any questions for Mr. Bowles? Okay, thank you for coming down. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Scott Benson. Up next would be Hunter Armstrong.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Scott Benson with the Lincoln Electric System. I was supposed to be here today to support the city in case there were any specific questions to LES. The folks out front thought it'd be a good idea for me to sign my name, just in case I got called in. But now that I know you're calling the names in order, that was a bad decision. But since I'm here, do you have any questions specific to LES?
Yes, councilperson Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm so glad you're here, Mr. Benson. That, that'll, that won't happen again while you're signing at a hearing.
Nope, that's a, that's a one-time mistake, I think.
It's good to see you again. So we've heard a couple different things. What will happen to the LES rates? And maybe this is a question for Ms. Esposito or later. What is, what is your, can you respond to what will happen to the LES rates if, in fact, we adopt the Climate Action Plan today? And by when?
So I can speak to the part that's specific to LES, which even though it's rolled into the Climate Action Plan, has already been adopted by the LES Board, right? So no matter what happens with the Climate Action Plan, I walk out of today and we still have the same marching orders. I can honestly tell you, we don't know. You know, we did the study that was already referenced here today that showed by 2030, if we were gonna be net zero carbon or close to it, using what we know today, that would effectively double rates over the next decade. Now, that's knowing what we know today. Granted, there's a limited number of options out there. Now, the catch is, if you really wanted me to have that done by 2030, I'd have to use that limited amount of options because there's not enough technology, not enough time for technology to make me a bunch of new things to put in in the next decade because it takes time to make these changes for us. But the LES Board didn't adopt a 2030 goal. They adopted a 2040 goal. And therein is giving us the opportunity for technology to catch up and give us some more opportunities. And that's why we don't know for sure what the cost is gonna be because we're banking on using a lot of things that aren't here today or maybe aren't as good as they're gonna be in the near future.
Good.
I should add, it's our job as we go through and make these changes to balance them with reliability and sound economic purposes, right? That's the same thing we do all the time. We balance sustainability, reliability, and cost. And we're gonna continue to do that going forward. So our plan for the near term is to continue doing what we've done over the last about 10 years, which has already reduced our CO2 production by about 42%. Look for opportunities that will further us towards that goal while also improving our resource portfolio and helping to keep costs low. Now, at some point, you're gonna get far enough down the road that you can't wait for those opportunities to come, right? At some point, it may not be me. Somebody's gonna say, hey, we're getting late into the 2030s. We gotta start making decisions because solely of the goal. That'll have to be something that the board will have to look at. But until that time, we're gonna make the right decision at the right time to move ourselves towards a goal and help the city of Lincoln.
Thank you. One more question, Mr. Chair. Did the LES Board take a position on the Climate Action Plan to support it? An official vote to support the Climate Action Plan as a board?
No, they did not. And again, I part, I think that was because they'd already taken action on the LES pieces that fit into this goal.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Very interesting. No other questions? Okay. Go sign in again.
Hunter Armstrong. Up next would be Amanda Callaway.
Good afternoon, council. My name's Hunter Armstrong. I live on 2829 Van Dorn Street. My wife and daughter moved out here about a year ago from rural Virginia because we wanted to plant our roots here and raise our family here in Lincoln. And we love it here so far. I work and study in risk and see the strategies that living systems use to deal with uncertainty and volatility over a long time. And so when I learned about the Climate Action Plan and Lincoln as a living system, I wanted to find out about it and see what kind of plan it is and what I thought of it as far as helping our city resilience. And I wanna make two really important points that seem fundamental to me that got me to really support this plan. The first is optionality. The Lincoln Resilience Plan increases the optionality The Lincoln Resilience Plan increases the optionality across the board of how Lincoln can adapt to the unknowns of the future. Just like an ecosystem doesn't know what's coming, we really don't know what's coming with the climate, we can model it, but more importantly, more important than just being able to model it is being able to have the adaptable resources to respond to the unknowns. When I looked through this plan, I thought that was something that was fundamentally important and that I think it possesses. The other key is that it separates and distinguishes when we're looking at resilience and when we're looking at lowering our carbon footprint. It knows not to lower our resilience just for the sake of lowering our carbon footprint. It recognizes that we're trying to do our part to change the tides here, but we're not going to do that at the expense of the boat that we're trying to build for those rough seas ahead. So for those reasons, I hope you support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next would be Robbie Cleaver.
My name's Amanda Callaway, and I'm representing Nebraska Conservation Voters. We're in support of the Lincoln Climate Action Plan. This plan is a much-needed step in the right direction for Lincoln. We know that the impacts of climate change in Nebraska are going to be warmer, drier summers, more extremely hot days, wetter springs, snowier winters, extreme rain events, and so much more. There is consensus among climate scientists that climate change is real, it's happening now, and its impacts will be severe. According to the University of Nebraska's 2014 Report on the Implications of Climate Change in Nebraska, the, and I quote, "Debate is restricted to precisely how these, excuse me, how these changes will play out and what actions we will need to take to adapt to and mitigate the effects of these changes. Action now is preferable and more cost-effective than reaction later. Climate action plans are necessary to address this very real concern. There are currently thirty-three states, including our neighboring states of Colorado and Iowa, that have recognized the need for a plan and have implemented these plans. We do not have a statewide plan in Nebraska, which makes local climate action plans like the one in front of you today even more important. This plan will help our city be prepared not only to manage the risks that come with climate change, but take advantage of opportunities. We also know that climate change is going to severely impact our community's most vulnerable populations and that this plan addresses those issues. Not only does it just make sense to adopt a climate action plan, but taking action on climate is incredibly popular. In Lancaster County, sixty-nine percent of people believe global warming is happening, and fifty-nine percent say they are worried about it. Additionally, NCV conducted a poll in 2019 that found the majority of voters in Lincoln support robust action on climate change, with fifty-eight percent of Lincolnites thinking that Nebraska should get one hundred percent of its electricity from clean renewable sources by 2050. According to the most recent UNL Rural Poll, more than sixty percent of rural Nebraskans think that our state should develop a climate action plan. That number is undoubtedly higher here in Lincoln. NCV is glad to see that the Climate Action Plan includes community-wide decarbonization as a main focus. LES's adoption of a net zero carbon by 2040 goal is an important step toward achieving that vision. It serves as an important reminder to recognize the vision set out in this Climate Action Plan, and we will need our city's policymakers to take continuous steps forward to implement the roadmap that this Climate Action Plan provides. We are supportive of the Lincoln Climate Action Plan and hope that you will support adopting it. We can create a better world for future generations, and this plan is a step toward that future."
Thank you.
Thank you. Robbie Cleaver. Up next, Stephanie Johnson.
Good afternoon. My name is Robbie Cleaver. I live here in Lincoln, and I'm here to talk about my opposition to the Lincoln Climate Action Plan. It is unaffordable to the average Lincoln, Nebraska citizen because it would cost billions of dollars, which has already been addressed, to implement just the water portion of the plan. Instead of growing jobs and economic opportunity, it will cost the average citizen far more than we can afford and take away quality jobs instead of adding to our opportunities. Furthermore, there is no scientific evidence that global warming is a threat to humanity. Remember when Al Gore put out his film, The Inconvenient Truth, it was about global warming? Well, he said all the ice was going to disappear from the Antarctica by, I don't remember, it was 2010 or something like that? Well, it's still there. In fact, a ship got stuck in the ice jam in the Antarctica not too long ago. But anyway, that didn't happen, so they had to change the term from global warming to climate change. Well, you know what? Our climate's been changing since it began, and it's going to keep changing. So you can't make everything we don't like about our weather and call it climate change because the climate's always changing. The better argument in relation to what happened in Texas, as somebody referred to the Texas thing, it's, as a society, we're very dependent on power twenty-four seven. If we're going to put many more things on electric and more dependent in the future, we need to make sure it is going to be power that we have twenty-four seven. The reason this cannot happen is the unreliability of solar and wind power alone. Both solar and wind have not been perfected to provide all of our needs and also leave a huge carbon footprint that can't be ignored. As to our quality of life, how can our mayor sit in her position and tell us that we need to all have electric cars that are not only unaffordable to the majority of the citizens in this city, but, well, she owns two of them, but most of them, average citizen can't do that. We, the people, are expected to either walk, pedal a bicycle, wa- wait in freezing cold temperatures at the bus stop to get where we're going. How unrealistic and out of touch our mayor is with the citizens that she represents in this city? How are we to carry our groceries? Pick up our grandchildren from school? Travel to Western Nebraska to visit elderly relatives? It could take up to three days to travel to Western Nebraska in an electric vehicle that gets an average of a hundred and fifty miles to a battery charge, and that's if you can find a place to charge it. It is irresponsible for our mayor and city council to spend ninety-seven thousand dollars for a draft that is for something unrealistic and totally unnecessary when our real needs are not being met in regard to lower taxes, fixing our roads, as you've noticed, they're really full of potholes, getting a strong police force, we need a police chief, fire departments, we need a fire department, fire chief, other measures in place for the safety and welfare of our citizens. These concerns should be addressed and should be our future focus to show that our city is prepared for the future for our children and for our future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Questions? Nope.
Stephanie Johnson. Up next would be Chuck Hasselbrook.
Hello, I'm Stephanie Johnson. It's good to see you again. I was here last week in a red hat. So my personal fear is that you've already made your minds up about this, just like you had last week, but it's good for us to come speak and be able to look you guys directly in the eye and let you know how the people of Lincoln are feeling about the things that you're working on and looking at. One of the things is we are a little bit tired of being, having these proposals come to us from a place of fear. Climate action, this being one of them. What the previous person just spoke of is something interesting to me, is that it used to be global warming and now it is climate change because they were wrong. The world wasn't warming up now, you know, we, we won't even go into that. There's a lot of science, it just depends on what you're reading. But I want to talk specifically about what you are going to be voting on today. But before I do that, I want to just say that it's, it was a little irresponsible for Nikki Esposito to say it hasn't cost us anything yet, because she was hired for a hundred and nineteen point five thousand dollars by the mayor to lead this whole charge. So that cost us something. It cost us about a hundred thousand for Veritas to look into it. So if we're going to be transparent, the people really need to understand that it already has cost us something. The reason that I'm before you is because I have children aged twenty-six to nineteen, and you and nobody else here has really come forth with the cost. That's not the Nebraska way. We are in Nebraska, we're not in California. I looked at the end notes of the proposal, the PDF, all of the sightings, all of the science, all of the facts, all of the information that they got was from Yale, which is where we know that our mayor graduated from, London, California, and yes, we have, would you not agree that we have very talented people here in Lincoln to come up with a cost proposal of what this would cost our children and our grandchildren and us? But so far, we've had, LES came forth, they don't know the cost, you specifically asked them, they don't know. No one's come up with an actual cost of what this burden is going to look like for our families, and it's irresponsible. That is not what we do in Nebraska. We don't go say we're going to go build a mansion, and we don't know how we're going to pay for it, and we don't know what it's going to cost. That's just abs- literally absurd. I can't even believe we're even talking about moving forward without knowing the cost. You've had people come up and that are for it, for this plan, and they, they admit that it is extremely broad and complex. That's, we don't do that in Nebraska. We have a plan, very specific plan, and we know the cost. We don't have that here. And if you think I'm against the environment or I'm against the climate, I am from central Nebraska. I grew up fishing, hunting, if you asked me to go find a natural spring, I could go do it, unlike our mayor, who went, she was in high school in Portland, she went to school in Yale, I was at UNL, she went to Oxford in London, social policy, this is just a huge umbrella of social policy, right? And then she went and worked with Gavin Newsom. We do not do things here like they do in California. So let's go back, figure this out, know how much it's going to cost my, my kids, give us an exact plan, not all this pie in the sky, we're going to do this in magic fairy dust, and we're going to pay for it somehow. Sam Lyons had a very good point where you voted last week that we don't have enough money, but now all of a sudden, you're going to tell our kids and our families they have to pay for this, and you don't have an actual plan. So my suggestion, humble as it may be, is to say we are not California, we are not Yale, we are not London, we're in a Brat, Lincoln, Nebraska. Yes, we care, but go back and let's figure out how to do this in Nebraska way. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Chuck Hasselbrook. I live at thirteen oh eight North Thirty-Eighth Street. I'm here to express my support for the Climate Action Plan and applaud the thought and the planning and work that went into it. This plan addresses a very real threat in climate change. I think that threat was on display two years ago when we saw what the floods did in Nebraska, was on display when we saw what happened in Texas more recently and led to cost of some twenty billion dollars. Well, neither event can be said to be solely a result of climate change. No weather event can be said to be solely the result of any one factor. We do know that there's a strong scientific consensus that the frequency of such events will increase unless we act quickly and aggressively to address human causes of climate change. And you know, it's really just common sense that if you face a threat, in most cases, it's going to be better and more cost-effective to address it while it's still manageable at its root cause rather than waiting and having to deal with the cost of that threat. I, I work in renewable energy development, and let me say a little bit about the cost of renewables. Because of innovation, in the last decade, the cost of renewable energy generation has fallen by eighty percent, over eighty percent, in both wind and solar. And those are the two low-cost of new generation today in America. I expect to see similar gains in the technology to fill the gaps when wind and solar are not generating, such as batteries, such as hydrogen fuels for peaker plants, and perhaps such as carbon capture for gas peaker plants to fill in those times when wind and solar aren't generating. And by the way, wind and solar are countervailing, so when you put the two together, it's more reliable than either one is by itself. And the other thing is that building, building out our transmission infrastructure helps overcome the variability of wind and solar generation because, you know, that the wind is generally always blowing somewhere, and we're using electricity at all times somewhere, and by being able to move that around, we overcome a lot of the problems, or many of the problems, with variable generation, but not all of them, and that's why we need that new technology, where billions and billions of dollars are being invested in hydrogen generation, in batteries, to deal with that as we move into the future. It's also important that we not only talk about cost, and it's important to remember, as the mayor stated in the introduction to this plan, that there is opportunity in addressing climate change as well as cost. Renewable energy has led the nation in job growth over the recent decade. In Nebraska, with its world-class renewable energy resources, is well-positioned to tap into those future opportunities. You know, I also, I also work in a volunteer role on federal policy to advance soil sequestration of carbon through farming practices of various types, and there's enormous opportunity there as well, and because agriculture is one of the very few industries that can take carbon out of the air and sequester it. I have to say that Lincoln is extremely well-situated to take advantage of that opportunity. You know, you have a world-class agricultural research institution here, you're surrounded by one of the nation's leading agricultural states. There's profound opportunity here for new jobs and new opportunities in Lincoln in addressing the climate threat. I would also add that addressing these challenges is with keeping, is in keeping with the best in our history. The one-time Lincolnite Willa Cathar wrote of the pioneers that attainment of material prosperity was a moral victory. It was a moral victory because it was rung from hard conditions. It was the result of a struggle that tested character. Well, climate change is the struggle, it is the challenge that most test our moral character, and that most test our mettle, and stepping up to meet it is the right thing to do, and it's also conservative in its truest sense. You know, I grew up in a conservative family, I would say one of the most conservative families in a German Lutheran farm community, and that's saying something. And it would have been completely counter to our way of thinking and living and farming to refuse to address a looming threat because it hard, was hard, or because it entailed sacrifice, or because we prefer to live for today irrespective of the cost to future generations. This plan reflects the best in traditional Nebraska values, and at the same time, it's forward-looking and visionary, and I urge your support. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you for coming down. Thank you.
Dallas Jones. Up next, Mike Eckert.
Chairman Guinness, members of the City Council, thank you for your time here today. My name is Dallas Jones. I'm the Director of Policy and Research for the Lincoln Independent Business Association, representing a little over a thousand businesses in Lincoln, located at six twenty North Forty-Eighth Street, Suite Two Oh Five, Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five zero four. I want to take the next five minutes discussing not the partisan nature of the climate change conversation, but to focus on why this Climate Action Plan is not the solution proponents think it might be. I appreciate the mayor's dedication for a greener Lincoln, and I'm empathetic to the proponents' argument about our changing climate and the cost of inaction. I fully understand the climate challenges we face in the next few decades, but that does not mean we must sacrifice our economy and our energy security. Levis stands in opposition to this amendment because there's a lack of detailed cost estimates for taxpayers, the additional regulations will negatively impact businesses, and the dangerous new energy mandates will weaken the reliability of our electric grid. Within the proposed plan are one hundred and twenty action items that none of which include an estimate on what the cost will be to the city, to the taxpayer, or to businesses. Items such as converting the entire city fleet to electric, implementation of green infrastructure mandates, conducting a Carbon Seek study, implementation of heat island study results, reducing the pruning cycle of trees, and creating a carbon sequestration plan may all cost the taxpayers tens of millions of dollars over the next decade. Our concern for the climate must not fog our desire to keep Lincoln affordable. To the proponents who do not see the necessity of providing cost estimates, since this is just a plan, this comprehensive plan amendment will significantly alter the direction of city planning and allocation of resources. It is therefore imperative that we understand the full fiscal impact these actions will have. A second water source alone could cost tens of millions of dollars. Not even, not even the Lincoln Electric System has an idea on how much they will need to raise electric rates to achieve their one hundred percent net decarbonization goal by 2040. Their closest estimate was for 2030, where electric rates would double for residential customers and industrial customers would pay millions more for electricity every year. Aside from lacking clear cost estimates, the climate plan would impose additional regulations on businesses. This plan calls for the adoption of the Salt Creek Resiliency Study, a one hundred and fifty-page report on suggested regulations that should be implemented. It calls for higher floodplain regulatory standards, cluster subdivision regulations, new requirements for zones located in a floodplain, buyout programs, additional setback regulations, low-impact development regulations, and increase in regulatory standards for freeboard. Historically, the word regulation has always been code for higher construction and operating costs for homes and businesses. In addition, this plan as it stands will weaken our grid's electric reliability. At the Planning Commission hearing last month, I highlighted the unprecedented At the Planning Commission hearing last month, I highlighted the unprecedented rolling blackouts across Lincoln and how our most reliable sources of power such as natural gas, coal, and nuclear were used to mitigate the dire situation. Using the proponents' logic, if the predictions for extreme weather events are true and Lincoln is destined to face more extreme temperature days, why then would they want to oversubsidize only renewable sources of energy when it takes a balanced mix of energy sources to best prepare Lincoln for such events? The comprehensive plan currently says, quote, "The customer-owned utility LES should continue to maintain a diverse generation portfolio with a balanced mix of resources," end quote. Even experts agree that energy diversification is important. Researchers from the University of Calgary said that, quote, "Diversification is essential to energy security." Make no mistake. The mayor's Climate Action Plan will make this existing policy null and void and will weaken our energy security. This climate plan identifies our current reliance on reliable sources of energy, including natural gas, a, quote, "climate risk." It calls for the complete, quote, "divestment from fossil fuel investments." Our climate is changing. Lincoln is very likely at risk to face more extreme weather events. The city council should instead pass a plan that is narrow, fiscally responsible, and feasible, and one that addresses specific areas in which we can cooperate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any other comments, questions for him? Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Mike Eckert, up next, Robert Borr.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Mike Eckert with Civil Design Group. I think you're all aware that I am President of an engineering firm that does a primary work for land developers here in Lincoln. And so I'm here today to speak specifically on item number 52 and portions of item number 53. Item 52, I believe, is one that we're grateful that last week Mickey Esposito worked with us on some amendments to. But it is, it is the issues that surround this document that Mr. Kruger spoke of earlier and many people and that is the Salt Creek Floodplain Resiliency Study. My first frustration is this study was done in August of 15th and was not made public until January 22nd with a virtual town hall and our ability to see the data actually came on January 27th, literally eight weeks ago, and now it's in front of you. Inserted as item number 53 in this larger plan that will become part of the comprehensive plan and has a weight of issues that will be very hard to get changed. So I appreciate that they have said that they will add more discussion to all of the bullet points in item number 52, but it is, my item is very frustrating and I'll explain some of those reasons too. Primarily that this study looked at, here is the entire Stevens Creek Basin. I think it's good to get a good geographical representation of it. 1,645 square miles of land. It extends, this is a little better map too, that shows how it does extend. I don't know if we're getting that on there. All the way up to Highway 92 up by Wahoo. And that map doesn't quite fit on there. Almost down to the Gage County line, out to Crete, almost to Seward, tremendously large area. So when we talk about the Salt Creek levee system and Salt Creek itself, that entire area drains down to the levee system absent the Stevens Creek area, which actually exits outside of the levee system and this portion of the drainage way. And so this intense study was done and one of the major components of it were structural dams that were needed to solve this problem. Somewhere between this report being done and the information given to you guys, that item was removed. That item was removed in the recommendations for the Climate Action Plan. And what was basically done in item number 52 is to put the entire onus of solving this flooding problem on new development areas and the standards in the new development areas by increasing what we have to map the floodplain to, what we have to map the detention cells to. And it's just very frustrating that about 50 acres in our comprehensive plan of growth represents about 3% of the basin. And that 3% of the basin is being asked to solve the majority of the problems because they pulled out the structural elements. With Mickey's amendment, they're back in and we are grateful for that. Because for decades and decades and decades, we have figured out the best way to solve a flood problem is with dams. And so we have to take a better look at that. And she mentioned the 2015 storm and the study starts about the 2015 storm. The 2015 storm, May 6th and 7th overnight. If you look at this chart, and this is from NOAA, 7.71 inches of rain came down in a 24-hour period. And we design the current 100-year event to 6.7 inches of rain. The new NOAA standards that they talk about in the study would take that to 7.3 inches. But what I always find valuable is empirical data. When you have a flood of 7.71 inches and the Salt Creek levee held very well, as Mickey said, there was $8.7 million of damage in that flood. The study talks about how the Salt Creek levee protects $1 billion worth of property. That's less than 1% damage from 100, over 100-year event flood. We went and checked all the detention cells and various developments we'd done. None of them had overtopped. They were designed to a 6.7-inch rain. So my point is, we have a lot of standards in place. Minimum corridor, water quality, detention that we've done since 1990 that do a great job of controlling these floods. And I think the new growth areas and those detention cells probably helped tremendously on that May 6th and 7th event of 2015. And so I just want to conclude as my timer runs out to say that the good news is we have a very manageable basin. The Salt Creek watershed, as you saw, is very, is actually very small. In this study, there was only one peer community they looked at that had a drainage basin smaller than the Salt Creek. We can control it. We don't have a major river running through here that we don't control. We control all of the land or our NRD does, our NRD does, I should say. A lot of it's outside of the city's jurisdiction, but that's why we have the wonderful entities that are the NRDs to help with that. So let's not put it all on the back of new development. We really want them to do what they said they'd do and open up communication with the engineers in this community on what is the best practices. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions? Nope, thank you.
Robert Borr, up next, Jesse Storita.
Robert Borr, Lincoln, Nebraska. Timer, five minutes. Unless Jane would like to make an amendment or offer a motion to break the rules like she often likes to do. Jane? Sorry to see we're still anti-face, but I'll proceed. This proposal was suggested to be moral. I would say that this proposal is not moral. This proposal is immoral. There's a great book called The Moral Case for Fossil Fuels. And it's absurd to say that the floods that people have been mentioning were caused by our use of fossil fuels. I want to start by strongly advising everyone to watch the Green Energy Expose by Michael Moore called Planet of the Humans and to get an idea of just how monstrous this scam is. Not a perfect documentary, but very illuminating and very interesting, especially considering leftist Michael Moore is behind it. Führer, our Führer, Mayor Marion Baird mentioned, or excuse me, her mentor, Michael Bloomberg, appears on the film. So you might find that more interesting for that reason. Anyway, catastrophic man-made climate change is just another religious tenet of the anti-creator and anti-human left that is opposed to human flourishing. It thrives on the same Orwellian newspeak and fear mongering. Someone else mentioned the fear factor that fake pandemics thrive on, namely, the earth is overpopulated. It can't sustain us. We need to deprive third-world countries of the same cheap, reliable energy we enjoy here. Quoting our Führer, "Climate change poses an existential threat to everyone." Give me a break. Here's the quick summary. Claims that we are in a rapid transition away from fossil fuels are wrong. In the past several decades, solar and wind have gone from providing virtually 0% of American energy to 9.7% of American electricity and just 3.8% of American energy overall. Solar and wind's 3.8% of the market share is not due to free market but rather anti-market policies that force consumers to use unreliable solar and wind even though they drive up energy costs. Anti-market energy policy number one. Unfair electronic, electric grid rules that compel utilities to pay same, what is that noise?
You pounding.
What am I, too close or what? Sorry. Unfair electric grid rules that compel utilities to pay the same prices for unreliable, unreliable solar and wind electricity as they do for reliable natural gas, coal, nuclear, and hydroelectricity. Anti-American, excuse me, yeah, anti-American and anti-market energy policy number two. Mandates that force consumers to pay for solar and wind regardless of how unreliable and expensive they are. Anti-market energy policy number three. Subsidies that force taxpayers to pay even more unearned money to solar and wind companies. The modest rise of unreliable solar and wind energy is not a free-market transition that will continue rapidly. It is an anti-competitive, destructive, and therefore unsustainable solar and wind welfare program. If policymakers want to encourage cleaner and lower-carbon forms of energy, they should decriminalize reliable, excuse me, reliable nuclear energy. Stop attacking modern natural gas production methods such as fracking and stop opposing hydroelectric dams. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Borr.
Jesse Storita, up next, Eric Burling.
How many more do we have on there?
Good afternoon, members of the council. Can you all hear me? When you're back here, it's hard to tell. Thank you. I own a gas-powered car and I'm in favor of this plan. We exist. People like me. Imagine that. I'm Jesse Storita, 3900 South 32nd Place, Lincoln, Nebraska 68502. Good to see all of you. Thank you all for your service to the city. So I am here today to speak in support of the mayor's Climate Action Plan. That's her name. And first, I just want to dispel some of the mythology that has attached itself to the plan. To be clear, 100 of the 120 items in the plan, and I've read it many times, do not require additional funding or approval. 20 of the items are funding-dependent, regulatory in nature, or otherwise require additional council approval. Any action item that requires a change or increase in city spending must first come before the council. Does anybody disagree with that? That seems like the right thing to do. That's why this is a plan. That's why it's not a Green New Deal or a fiat or a mandate. It's a plan. Since there are just a few words that resonate with the opponents of this plan, I wanted to speak to you in your language, freedom. Are you free when a severe drought cuts off your water and the city has no secondary supply? Are you free when a downpour floods your home near Salt Creek because the city was caught off guard or unprepared? Are you free when a brutal winter storm forces blackouts worsened by fossil-fueled climate change? Are you free on those growing number of days with the heat index above 105, projected to be 56 in 2050? Are you free when pollen and smoke-filled air keeps you locked up inside? We all know how much that sucks. Are you free when the only one who matters is you? Finally, are you free when your son or daughter asks you, "Dad, how did you help Lincoln's environment?" You can answer. Son? Daughter? I live free. Free of responsibility and full of innocence. Look, this plan is not some panacea. It's not going to fix all of our challenges. I don't believe that. But it sees them as challenges, as part of our shared reality and as opportunities to improve. Ignoring reality does not abolish limits. It accentuates them. Thank you. I appreciate all of you. Thank you for listening to all of our testimony. And with that, I take any questions.
Any questions? No, thank you for coming down. Appreciate it. We're going to take, take one more and then we'll take a break for five minutes. We still have.
Eric Burling.
Hello, I'm Eric Burling, Republican candidate for city council, and I'm here today to speak in opposition of the Climate Change Plan in Lincoln. So the current plan that we're discussing today is for the next six years. And, but of course, the ultimate goal involves policies and regulations and extra costs that will affect us all in Lincoln for the next 30 years. The goal is to reduce emissions in Lincoln 80% by 2050. Despite that phrase being used quite often, the current CO2 emissions aren't even included in the plan or the vision. The estimates I found online are around 4.75 megatons of CO2 emissions in Lincoln. To put that into perspective, that's less than a thousandth of a percent of the world's total emissions from burning fossil fuels. Lincoln's actions in the grand scheme of things are completely insignificant. Okay, it's also important to note that the plan conveniently ignores carbon emissions due to our consumption of goods, particularly those produced overseas. That data isn't easy to come by, but I found that just the citizens here in Lincoln, through their consumption of goods from China, account for 2.5 megatons of CO2 emissions. That increases our actual emissions here in Lincoln by 50%. When we include consumption of other foreign nations, we see that our consumption of goods accounts for far more global emissions than any activities here in Lincoln. One of my complaints about the current plan is that it's based on incomplete data and it's tricking us into thinking that we could actually reduce our emissions by 80%. When anyone who looks at the data knows that's impossible unless we just stop buying phones, we stop buying computers, we stop buying TVs, we stop buying cars and everything else that makes our lives in America so comfortable. I don't want to talk at length about climate change, but it's true, our climate is changing. And yes, some of that can be directly attributed to humans. We breathe out CO2 and we burn fossil fuels. But it's important to remember, humans are a very small part of our planet and our actions, especially those here in Lincoln, have minimal effect. Now, all 7.6 billion humans could fit inside of Nebraska and we'd each have 280 square feet to ourselves. Our planet is amazing. It's huge and it's complex. And there isn't a person in this room nor on the planet that understands or can predict what's going to happen. But many have tried. We have headlines, Arctic Ocean to be ice-free by 2000. UN predicts disaster if global warming not checked by 2000. Arctic Ocean to be ice-free by 2004. Arctic Ocean to be ice-free by 2012. Arctic Ocean to be ice-free by 2044. Four years to save the earth. 2020 is the deadline. Even today, I keep hearing, we know, we know, we know. We don't know. We just keep pushing the goalposts. And that's the thing about climate change. There's no end. And there never will be. Again, we don't need carbon sequestration plans. We just need to focus on keeping Lincoln beautiful. I love trees and parks and bike paths and green spaces. I love them because they encourage active lifestyles and recreation. To me, and I think a lot of people here in Lincoln, the purpose of our trees and parks is not to sequester carbon. The purpose is to make Lincoln a beautiful place to live. So let's focus on keeping Lincoln beautiful. The LES Sustainable Energy Program is providing incentives for wealthy Lincolnites to buy fancy appliances. It doesn't need more funding. A heat pump water heater costs around $1,600. A standard electric water heater is $400. LES, along with the $300 federal tax rebate, subsidize that cost by 50%. But the heat pump water heater is still $300 to $400 more than a normal water heater. Who's buying that? What type of family in Lincoln is going to Home Depot and buying a $1,600 water heater? And give you a hint, it's not the families that need financial support. These high-efficiency units are just not economically feasible without the government subsidies. Why should our money go to help rich families pay for top-of-the-line appliances? And the plan for LES to switch to renewables is short-sighted and too costly. The current technology is not cost-effective and it's too unreliable. And I know we're all happy about the rolling blackouts we had in that negative 20-degree weather. LES says the sooner we act, the less risky it is, but less risky for whom? Our city should not be committing every one of its citizens to a plan that makes no economic sense. sense. LES will double our rates. That extra money goes for what exactly? Let's spend our city money on things that improve our lives. Let's let individuals who care enough about the planet make these sacrifices. And they are sacrifices because they're not economically responsible at all. Even with the federal tax credit, a solar panel setup today takes 50 years minimum to pay for itself because of the increase in your property taxes. Solar is still too expensive and only makes sense when more than half the cost is subsidized by the government. Again, completely fine for individuals to choose the environment over good economics, but it doesn't make sense for our city to make that same decision. The mayor says this is about being smart, but this isn't about being smart. It's about staying in control. It's about appeasing the voter base. It's about making a decision that benefits very few people while costing every single person in this city. And that's what you're voting, or sorry, that's what you're doing today if you vote to support the climate plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will take a seven-minute break and go till 5:15. We'll be back. We stand in recess.
Welcome back.
Welcome back to the city council meeting for March 22nd, 2021. We'll continue with our public hearing. Sony, go ahead and call the next up.
Up for testimony is Mark Gill. Up next, Trevor Riley.
Sorry, it's still this slow. It's getting better. I have a copy for you guys. I didn't make a lot of copies because I ran out of ink late in the night, so. I'm sure I gave you the right. Yep, I gave you the right. My name is Mark Gill. I am from Lincoln, Nebraska, live at 1621 Kennedy Drive here in Lincoln. And I'm here to speak on the Climate Action Plan. And I'm not against every aspect of it. I'm looking at the green energy aspect of it. That's primarily what I'll address. I haven't gotten into a lot into the other, the other aspects, flood control, things like that. I'm not a scientist. I'm just a citizen who's done a lot of research in, in digging and hearts, you know, soul searching such. They talk about it's settled science. There is no such thing as settled science. There was a time when they thought the world was flat. Well, it's not. I've been at high altitude, military aircraft, I can guarantee you, there's a definite curvature there. There was a time when they thought that the whole universe revolved around the earth. Well, Galileo proved them wrong. He paid dearly for it, but he proved them wrong. So let's don't stick with saying it's settled science on anything. We can always learn something new. There's not new science, there's new knowledge. I looked at the, as I was researching the energy, this energy aspect of the green energy, I was looking not so much at the benefit of, of a different type of energy as I was the cost, the cost ratio of the energy, what it would be good. Someone said earlier that the climate was an immoral issue. I think it is. And I'm going to address that today. In that packet I gave here, this article put out by the Manhattan Institute, which was funded, is a think tank funded by William Casey, former director of CIA. And he talked about green energy. It costs a fortune in fossil fuel to dig up the mineral resources to build these green machines, the turbines, the solar panels, rare earth minerals, batteries, a 1,000 pound battery, photovoltaic, you know, not a photovoltaic, but lithium ion battery. You would not believe the amount of cobalt that takes to go into a 1,000 pound battery. There's an overburden of earth that has to be moved to get to it. I'm skipping really quickly through here because of the time constraints, and that's why I gave the full packet to this thing right here. Not only does it cost money to dig this stuff up, but it, there's a human cost involved there too. And there is an environmental cost. These wind turbines, they're not biodegradable. As long as it costs more to dig them up and build them than they save us or produce for us. These turbine blades are plastics. They don't biodegrade. You bury them, they'll be there 10,000 years from now. Solar panels, the toxic metals in a solar panel, don't get me wrong, solar panels can be recycled, but it's so costly that, that most of them end up in a landfill somewhere. And the toxins from these metals seep into the ground. The other alternative, since Americans do sometimes tend to be selfish, is that we will put those in a shipping cargo container and ship them to a thorough country that doesn't have the infrastructure, like lined landfills, to absorb this. So yeah, it is a moral issue, a big moral issue. Mining all this stuff costs money, it costs energy. You're burning fossil fuel. This stuff didn't just jump out of the ground and come here. You burn fossil fuel just to get to it. Use chemicals and other fossil fuel and some very toxic environmental greenhouse gases to process some of the minerals that are, the metals and minerals that are used to construct a solar panel. On the, the moral issue here, and I, and like I say, you've got the material, please do look at it because we took a lot of trouble digging up what I felt was some reliable information so it wouldn't be, be me speaking. Right here, a few years ago, remember the lawsuit filed against the tech companies? Mining cobalt in Africa? These are the children that are digging that cobalt out of the ground. They're not using huge shovels, not even fossil fuel driven steam shovels. They are mining this by hand. Some of them are mining this to replace the parents who already died from cobalt toxicity from mining this resource. So before we get all romantic about green energy and natural this and natural, let's look at the total cost. Let's look at the dark side. Let's look at the financial aspect of it. Let's look at the energy it costs to get it out of the ground. We don't want to be here in Lincoln, Nebraska where we're like, you all saw the movie Jurassic Park, was it Jeff Goldberg, the, the science, number scientist guy? He said, he's looking at the, the genetic experiment with dinosaurs. He says, you know, we're so busy asking, can we do something that we don't stop and ask, should we do it? So we look at energy, we always need to be better. We need to be smarter. There was one time when they wouldn't run coal because it was so dirty. We got smart coal technology now. We can do the same thing with our machines that use fossil fuel, which is a ready, reliable source of energy.
Can you wrap it up?
Get smart. You know, let's go, let's go smart, not just romantic.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
You bet.
Trevor Riley, up next, Patrick Peterson.
Good evening. Trevor Riley, 2436 C Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68502. I think Mickey's presentation was informative and it demonstrates that she has the best intentions in mitigating the damage in, from extreme weather events in the city. As a frequent runner of Rock Island and Mo Pack Trail along Antelope Creek, there is clearly a benefit to having well-planned improvements to our watershed management. The city should keep that in mind. I think that's a good idea. But I don't think this whole plan should be passed for the merits of three points that everyone can agree on when there is another 117 included in the whole resolution. It's important to note that many of those points are listed as encouragements, so couldn't many of those be passed as a resolution to recognize the benefits of carpooling or recognizing the health benefits of biking to work, et cetera, et cetera? But when there's the retrofitting and weathering of buildings and conducting an, an energy audit of all buildings, that should make every, every single resident consider the cost. What will it cost the individual taxpayer? What will it cost the business owner? What will be the working hours spent on an energy audit that could be better used in main hours repairing the roads? There is an important lesson on economics we could learn from Henry Hazlitt here, and that is, the art of economics consists in looking not merely at the immediate, at the immediate, but at the longer effects of any act or policy. It consists in tracing the consequences of that policy, not merely for one group, but for all groups. So the council should keep this lesson in mind, and the measures within this plan should be individually voted on. If you don't want to individually vote on it, then parcel it out by each subject matter, the respective sections. But good government does not rely on blanket policymaking or packing 100 points into one resolution. We all read the Climate Action Plan, but how many of us followed the source document for the projections of Lincoln's future climate on page 13? It was just a model. Models are useful tools, but they are not the scientific method. They have a limited capacity to accurately forecast the future, and we should not exaggerate their capacity to justify passing such a plan. It's dishonest to tie every extreme weather event to climate change. There may be a consensus that human activity is a variable in the many factors that drive climate change, but no one can answer the question of how much. We can't answer that question. We don't know how much human activity is actually driving climate change. And we also don't know how much new funding 20 items within the plan would need. So please, consider the lesson from Hazlitt, and maybe the concrete poured for a windmill mast would be better utilized building a thorium salt reactor. I wouldn't know for certain, but I know that nuclear is not listed anywhere within the resiliency plan. So are we really having an honest discussion? Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Patrick Peterson, up next, Mary Hilton.
Evening, council members. Patrick Peterson, 137 South 9th Street. Tonight, I'm not going to mention cows or airplanes, or tearing down homes and buildings or railroads, or ridiculous price tag, and 100 other things that you can do your own research on. Here's my point of order. I'm going to limit my focus and be concise, not a bash fest, but a reality check. Expanding government's role in spending to tackle climate change has been proven to be like hiring a thief to guard a bank. The private sector should tackle the needed changes, not expanding government through increased taxes. Progress in the name of expanding government and reducing liberty is not progress, no matter how much you lie to your kids and grandkids to get them to believe it. Businesses already face cumbersome regulations and hoops to jump through, to even begin. Do we really want to be an anti-business community here in Lincoln? Last month, we faced rolling blackouts. I, for one, am not comfortable giving even more power to a select few on whether or not I will be able to turn my lights on. This plan massively expands the size and scope of local government's control over activities best left to the private sector. It would empower them to change, control how much people produce and consume energy, build homes, drive cars, et cetera. That's typical for most big government environmental policies. They're so focused on prospective ways to control people's behaviors that they crowd out or ignore opportunities for innovative solutions. This is being pushed in the 11th hour, which is shameful, yet what we've come to expect, almost as though we have to pass it to find out what's in it. Thanks, Nancy. I've heard from some of the younger speakers this evening that this is popular, so that's good enough for me. Here's the question for the council. When's the last time a regulatory body was formed by the city? When was any administrative body formed to control any issue? And when was it scaled back? Can you name one? It never ends. As for me, I'm off to go help those who lost their jobs and livelihoods in January to go find these glorious new, energy-friendly jobs. The reality is that governmental policies structured around the environment aren't good for the environment if they're so bad for people. I ask you all to seriously evaluate government's role in the lives of those in our community. Thank you, council members.
Mary Hilton, up next, Van Chon Blithe.
Good evening, council members. I'm Mary Hilton. The other day, I had the privilege of re-listening to a speech by Ronald Reagan. He gave it in October of 1964. In it, he reminds us, to quote, "That government is beholden to the people, and it has no other source of power except the sovereign people." And that this is still the newest and most unique idea in all the long history of man's relation to man. In America, we have this idea, codified in the U.S. Constitution, that government is supposed to protect the rights given to us from God, and to tell, not to tell us how few we can keep. In 1964, we were in the middle of a Cold War, a war against socialism and communism. Even back then, creeping into the American mind was the false idea that our natural, unalienable rights were a dispensation of government, a gift from government. Then, and even more so now, freedom has never been so fragile, so close to slipping from our grasp, as it is at this moment, to quote Reagan. With these American ideals in mind, I can only imagine what he would think of the mayor's Climate Action Plan, which is the Green New Deal in Lincoln, Nebraska. No matter the weather events that might happen, the plan contains it, justifying its existence and supposed need. This plan calls for the radical control of people at the expense of their freedom and liberty. In the spirit of Reagan, I ask, will we believe in our capacity for self-government, or will be, or will we abandon the American Revolution and confess that the leaders at Lincoln City Hall can plan our lives for us better than we can plan them ourselves? As a farmer's daughter, I know the intrinsic value of stewardship. We all want to have clean air and water, and we do in Lincoln. And I believe in reasonable, common sense, individual project solutions to protect Lincoln against severe weather. And while the plan contains some worthwhile endeavors, as a whole, it's dangerous and a threat to our way of life in Lincoln. It will be the governing document through which all of the plans and budgets are filtered, yet it will contain few, it contains few price tags. Riddled with excessive business and personal regulations, as you've heard today, it will have an adverse effect on families and community economic growth and limit freedom. It will cost taxpayers billions of dollars. Instead of our city leaders focusing on hard, our hard-earned tax dollars, on civil engineering needs of our city, like streets that cars drive on, our crumbling infrastructure and public safety needs, instead of focusing on civil engineering, our city is practicing social engineering, social control, in this feel-good document called the Climate Action Plan. If you have read the document like I have, you will recall how it begins by saying that if you reimagine your community and recreate it into what you think it needs to be to face the challenges ahead, and with shared sacrifice, and all 176 pages implemented over time, Lincoln will basically be a path to paradise. I would propose, however, that hoping in this plan is hope misplaced, and being guided by this plan will result in misguided priorities. I like to think of the Climate Action Plan by its acronym, CAP, CAP, defined as to place a limit or restriction. It will put a cap on freedom, a cap on property rights, a cap on individualism, a cap on free enterprise, a cap on economic growth, a cap on freedom of thought, a cap on self-determination. I believe that government has an important but limited role, and with its primary job being to secure and protect life, liberty, and property. This plan will turn us willingly or unwillingly into a covenant community that we have not signed up for. But our local government, if it implements this plan fully, will control how we eat, what we eat, how we cook it, and what kind of home we live in, and how it will be heated. It will determine what we drive and possibly how we drive, how often we drive, and where we can drive to. It will be, it will control and govern, we will be controlled and governed by it. And if we don't comply, we will be shamed into compliance by our neighbors and possibly our own children, or fined. We don't need the Green New Deal in Lincoln, Nebraska. It's a bad plan and a bad idea, and I strongly encourage you to reject it for the good of our families and our businesses and for our way of life in Lincoln. And to paraphrase one last idea of Reagan's, I have, I have faith in people, that they have the ability and dignity and the right to make their own decisions and determine their own destiny. And I would encourage you, at least tonight, to delay voting on this plan until next week, until all the amendments can be considered by the public and give their input. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Van Chon Blithe, up next, Sean Truckee.
Hello, city council. First, I just want to say for the record, there are only 12 chairs available in the chambers, which is less than 10% of capacity. I'm tired, and many, of sitting out in the hallway with all the chatter. We cannot hear, especially with the masks on. I don't know why we, the people, even come down here to testify or send emails, because we already know how the vote will go tonight. Sandra, Tammy, Michael, Jane, and our rhino, Richard McGuinness, will vote to pass this today. Roy will be the only one to stand up for we, the people, and say no. All of you are puppets of the mayor. So I say, keep waking up, Lincolnites, all you conservatives out there, and vote in the primary April 6th. I'd like to get into the money side of things and the financial burdens this will place on Lincoln citizens. Lincoln is already overburdened with taxes. It causes our rent prices and monthly house mortgages to rise. Increase the cost of products sold at local businesses. It hurts our local economy as a whole. Just imagine, what we are paying now will look like pennies compared to the enormous increase if you approve this. Already, this has cost us taxpayers over $200,000 during this pandemic. First, the Omaha-based Verdis Group developed the mayor's draft plan on a $97,000 contract. $97,000 of a draft plan. The Verdis Group has also been involved in Lincoln's cardboard ban, and you can see how well that's gone. First, they sell us on one thing, many locations all over the city, and next thing you know, it becomes something very different than what it was promised, and is a complete catastrophe. It is especially hurting low-income families and local businesses. Does anyone think perhaps this type of situation could happen again with, oh, I don't know, a climate action plan like this one? I call it the Green New Deal. Secondly, the mayor hired another one of her friends, something she really likes to do, it seems. Mickey Esposito will be a policy, senior policy advisor to lead the mayor's Green New Deal. In her new role, she is paid $119,500 a year. Those two things alone have cost us taxpayers over $200,000. That doesn't count the other costs, like hires or of other lower positions to get the plan to this point, or the cost of marketing this plan, like creating videos using children who are asking the mayor softball questions about her plan, in order to convince Lincoln citizens that this plan is a good thing. On a side note, children this age should only be worried about playing and being a kid. Even if we did believe everything in the mayor's Green New Deal plan, why in the world are we taking, talking about this with children? Our children are being raised in fear, and they are being taught to fear everything. Prolonged fear comes trauma and psychological damage. Being done to them will be irreversible. Just making of this short video shows how the mayor doesn't care about our children or our community, as long as she gets what she wants. Imagine that, all of these costs to Lincoln's taxpayers before you have even voted to implement her plan. If it is implemented, this project will assumably cost billions and billions of dollars to Lincoln citizens. Exactly how much? We don't know, because the mayor's Climate Action Plan lacks really, lacks really, and cost estimates other than the Lincoln Journal-Star reporting. Some efforts, such as the city's need to secure a second water source, could cost more than a billion, according to city estimates. All other cost estimates seem to be a non-existent to the public. With the enormous changes to Lincoln that this plan proposes, we should at least have an idea on what action items will cost taxpayers over the next years. The plan is too vague and open-ended when it comes to what it will cost us, not to mention the current draft of the Lincoln Action Plan is only beginning. The mayor's plan to fundamentally change Lincoln will not stop here, like the cardboard ban. There will be more. We will be promised one thing, but we'll get another. The 2021-2027 Action Plan serves as the first step to a world where Lincoln becomes essentially unaffordable to live, work, and raise a family in. In short, this plan is simply not feasible. If you look closely, the goals and standards it, do not seem to be based on any data we were created, were created to please the radical environmentalists advising the mayor. It is full of feel-good policies that don't actually help the environment, it only gives the appearance of it. While the Action Plan makes for a great headline, I believe that if you vote this plan into effect in five years, the people of Lincoln will look at you and hold you responsible. They will look at this failed plan with anger, I'm almost done, and because they must now pay enormously higher taxes, and will see that it was all wasted over promised ideas. Will you enjoy being the city council who doomed Lincoln to becoming a ghost town where everyone moves away and becomes, and because they can't afford these policies? Because if you vote this in, Lincoln will become affordable to, unaffordable to live, work, and raise a family. With all the resolutions I'd like to add brought forth to this at the 9th hour by the mayor, I would ask that you would put tonight's vote off. In closing, I would like to add that we, the people, do not want our city to turn into San Francisco, where our mayor worked under Governor Gavin Newsom, who, by the way, is getting recalled with over 2 million signatures. And I did get my hands on the Lincoln Chamber of Comppers, this will be in your notes today, a letter they sent the mayor, and in it, they just said, "We very much appreciated the opportunity to serve on the mayor's Climate Resiliency Task Force with other community stakeholders." But if you notice at the bottom, it says, "However, we feel constrained in providing an endorsement of all the proposed initiatives without further understanding of the cost of the action, inaction, and the effect of Lincoln economy." And I want to thank Leba for coming up, everything that Dallas Jones said, I just say thank you.
Sean Truckee, up next, Joe Frye.
Good evening. My name is Sean Truckee, live at 4925 Thomas Brook Lane. I wish to start today by saying that I believe the actions of the Planning Commission to rubber stamp the Climate Action Plan last month were disgraceful, not even being two days removed from rolling blackouts in Lincoln, over 4 million in Texas without power, over 12 million without fresh drinking water, and about two dozen people dead. I trust this council will show more discernment than that. Last month, some of the coldest weather in a very long time enveloped much of the U.S. Heavy precip in the southern states left an icy mess as temperatures continued to plunge. Wind, solar, natural gas, and even coal sources of generation all failed us at a time when energy was critically needed to keep people from freezing. But during the worst of this time, did you know that wind was only supplying about 5% of the power demand in the southwest Power Pool region? Wind can produce up to 60 Wind can produce up to 60% in ideal conditions, but that is the problem. It is highly variable, which is not something you want in your electric grid. On the other hand, natural gas was producing 65% of the total power needed on that Monday and Tuesday. One key lesson we should learn from this is that we need more diversification of our energy sector, not less. I thought resiliency was the stated goal of this plan. I want to strongly challenge the notion of moving towards electric-only heating of our homes. While electric heat pumps are highly efficient and are a great primary source of heat, every furnace contains a backup heat source because heat pumps don't really work when the weather gets cold, like we saw last month. Those backup systems normally are either electric resistance heat or natural gas. Electric resistance heats consumes a tremendous amount of energy and is very expensive to operate, especially compared to natural gas. Moving to an all-electric heat for homes and businesses would cause a tremendous strain on the power grid at a time when we can least tolerate it. This is the exact opposite of what we want to do. Having a gas backup diversifies your heat source and keeps electricity available for other uses. The same could be said for electric cars. Where is the power to charge all those batteries going to come from? Especially when cold weather severely limits the range and charging efficiency of those cars. A reoccurring theme in this plan is the need to decarbonize, and if we don't, doom is sure to happen. As a nation, we continue to shut down coal plants that have historically provided the bulk of our power generation. But did you know that last year, China built three times the amount of coal-fired electrical power capacity as the rest of the world combined? Where's the outrage from the green energy crowd? This one fact alone shows the complete sham that the Paris Climate Accords are. Wild projections about climate in the future are based on nothing more than flawed computer models. The report itself says we have long since crossed the safe threshold for CO2 emissions. Yet here we are. So-called experts have made dozens of these doomsday predictions for decades with none of them coming to pass. A few examples, in 1970, we were told an ice age by 2000. 1971, a new ice age coming by 2020 or 2030. Scientific consensus, the planet is cooling, famine's imminent, 1976. 1978, no end in sight to the 30-year cooling trend. In 2000, children won't know what snow is. I think we know that's not going to be the case after this last winter. And in 2008, Arctic, the Arctic will be free of ice by 2018, and the list goes on. I also want to call out the cynical and exploitative use of the poor, disadvantaged, and minority communities in this report. Saying that they are disproportionately affected by climate change over and over does not make it so. What they are, in fact, disproportionately affected by is stupid public policy that causes their cost of living to skyrocket because of increased energy, food, housing, and transportation costs. This plan will be devastating to the very ones it claims to help. Let's also not forget, as was mentioned earlier, that green energy takes a human toll in another way. The rare earth elements required for batteries, solar panels, and other components of green energy are often mined by slave labor, often involving children in places such as the Congo. These people work in horrible conditions, and the pollution generated is disastrous to those regions. But I guess us Americans, we can feel good about going green, right? The bulk of this plan is nothing more than wishful thinking, government overreach, and micromanaging of how people use energy in their daily lives. There's no cost associated with any of this either, has been kind of said multiple times today, but I think we all can agree that it won't be cheap. I believe this is bad policy, and I ask the council to reject the plan as currently written. Thanks for your time today.
Joe Fry, up next, David Blythe.
Good evening, council members. My name is Joe Fry, 8050 South 84th Street. I'm here in opposition to the Climate Action Plan and not opposition against climate change. I do feel that climate change is an issue, and there's things going on that we need to address. My concern is if we adopt the Climate Action Plan today, future, future council members are going to feel obligated to actually fund this product, project. And my concern is where we're going to find the money. Understanding, understanding that the council does have to reconvene for fiscal notes when it comes to a lot of these projects, there's some pretty heavy lifts in here that are going to require a lot of dollars. Heavy lifts requiring a lot of dollars like that's going to have consequences to the cost of living in Lincoln, Nebraska. Ken Marr, ex-council member, mentioned earlier today, who do we believe? There's a lot of stuff out there. Scott Benson said maybe we're going to see double, double the price of electrical costs. I think that's concerning. Steve Bowen mentioned rolling blackouts, which would require, but generate, sustain, generate, generators for sustainable power. I think we should consider each of these line by line on their own merit. I think that would be a more prudent way to approach this climate action issue that we're coming up with. We're Nebraskans, we pay some pretty high taxes. We pay income inherited, inheritance, property tax, occupation, all those taxes, and I suspect we're going to pay more with, through this, through the Climate Action Plan. And so I think we need to encourage sustainable growth, reduce outmigration, and not push people out because that's what it's going to do. The people that are going to be affected by this are going to be the poor, the impoverished people, and that's, that's a bad thing. So I feel, personally, I feel good climate policy can stand on its own two feet, and I think that's how it should be handled. So, any questions?
Any questions? Nope, thank you.
Thank you, you guys, too, for your service. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
David Blythe, up next, Ken Winston.
Good evening. My name is David Blythe. I live here in Lincoln. I'm here to talk about the, the climate plan. I own an engineering firm here in Lincoln and do engineering and development on renewable energy systems and renewable fuel systems. I have over 20 years' experience working with electric utilities, including MPPD as nuclear engineer, and 15 years developing and building renewable energy and renewable fuel facilities around the world. We also develop solutions to reduce emissions from power generations and other industrial facilities. I'm here to share my concerns with the fundamental assumptions of this plan related to solar power. To be clear, I'm not against wind or solar energy. We, as a company, are also working on solar generation projects currently in other countries. We're also working on projects to use that solar to produce the energy required to make hydrogen, which will fuel trucks and stationary engines in the future. I do push back on the assumption that wind and solar energy is the silver bullet to Lincoln's greenhouse gas reduction plans. Solar and wind should be part of Lincoln's energy mix, as it is now, but not as a primary generating source. The plan states the price of solar panels has dropped 40%, so solar generation is the focus. Panel cost has dropped, however, solar is still expensive related to other technologies. Installed cost for solar, according to NREL, is still over a dollar a kilowatt hour at the utility scale. This excludes battery storage. Large-scale battery storage costs have also dropped over the last few years, will continue to drop. Based on the project we're developing for 2022 and 2023, the cost of battery storage is targeted 40 cents a kilowatt hour. What's important to understand is to transition wind and solar to your primary source and baseload source of power, you need to be able to store and release the power to the grid as the users demand. Solar can reliably generate power six to seven hours a day in Nebraska with the current technology. New technologies coming on might get that up to eight hours. However, we, as Lincolnites, need power 24/7. To build solar facilities that generate power 24/7 requires capital cost for the battery storage that's in excess of the cost of the solar panels themselves. So basically, it costs more to store power than it costs, excuse me, it costs more to store the solar power than to produce it for baseload purposes. This makes installed cost of solar over $2 a kilowatt hour at utility scale. This compares to 50 cents per kilowatt for new natural gas generation, which are designed to run 24/7. New natural gas generation facilities are a quarter the cost of solar installations. We are also currently working with Siemens on carbon capture technology to integrate with large-scale natural gas turbines. New natural gas generating stations can have a very low carbon footprint when implemented in a combined cycle configuration with carbon capture. Carbon capture technologies are just starting to become commercial and will certainly improve efficiency and capital costs over time. A lot of these technologies are coming on board, but they still haven't really been proven or tested or, you know, met the test of time. With carbon capture, natural gas generation is still half the cost of solars with battery chargers and storage. The plan also states that solar is the cheapest form of energy. This is not a factual state, when, statement when the capital cost, operating cost, maintenance cost are total. It's certainly not cheaper today. When looking at the cost of installation, the cost of operations, and life cycle carbon footprint, I will argue that natural gas facilities can offer a better solution than solar in terms of cost of power to the end user. Demonizing the use of natural gas to produce reliable, low-cost power over the next 50 years as we transition to a hydrogen-based economy is naive. In closing, I'd like to say transitioning to a low-carbon economy is a process. It'll take 50 years, not 20 or 30, as this plan projects. This is according to the International Energy Agency, IEA. I agree with setting aggressive environmental targets with both short and medium terms. However, trying to mandate or incentivize a major shift in energy usage and energy habits, as this plan outlines, will not achieve our goals for reducing our carbon footprint in the timeframe outlined or support the growth and evolution of our city. We need to be smarter and more strategic than the proposed, proposed actions outlined in this plan. I strongly recommend that the timelines and the proposed actions in this plan are revisited prior to adoption by this council. I also suggest you engage experts in the energy sector to provide an honest assessment regarding what is realistic in the short term and medium term, the cost of the proposal which seemed to be missing from the group who developed the plan, the LAS Advisory Board. And hiring an environmental consulting group like Verdis out of Omaha are not qualified to develop this roadmap evidenced by the statements they made in this plan, and it was a waste of our taxpayer money. I believe future work in this plan should be issued under a proper tender process to qualified companies. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Yes. You just said this should be done with qualified companies.
Correct.
Are there any such companies around?
I believe there's a company in Omaha called HDR that has experience with MPPD, LES, OPPD, the Southern Power Pool. They have experience renewables. They have experience with water, and they understand environmental technologies. To me, those are the kind of companies that should be working on plans like this, who can identify actions, identify tasks, identify risks, identify the future technologies that are coming on board, and the costs associated with this.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Chairman McGinnis and members of the, of the Lincoln City Council. My name's Ken Winston. My office address is 1327 H Street, Suite 300, Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm appearing today to provide a letter from a number of faith organizations in, in the city of Lincoln. I'm appearing on behalf, on behalf of Nebraska Interfaith, Power, and Light. You will notice that, that this letter has been signed by 17 Lincoln faith leaders representing thousands of Lincolnites. These faith leaders ministered to thousands of people in Lincoln and represented diverse mix of faith and community members. The support for the Community Action Plan is made, the Climate Action Plan, is based on universal truths of, of love for God's creation, for neighbor, and for our children. One of the main focus, areas of focus of the plan is environmental justice. It's a reality that low-income and minority people are more likely to deal with pollution, to live in homes in floodplains, and that are harder to heat and cool. This plan has numerous provisions to address these initiatives, these aspects, such as Initiative 14, which would bring together people from many organizations, including the Lincoln Electric System and Community Action, develop, to develop programs to help low-income people make their homes more efficient. Now, this plan is also rooted in reality, and that's something I'd like to talk about a little bit. There's been a bunch of discussion about the Lincoln Electric System today, and I know Councilwoman Ward, Ward was on the Lincoln Electric System Board for several years. The Lincoln Electric System has reduced their carbon emissions by 42% in the last 10 years while also, while increasing the renewable generation from 8% to 49%. Now, LES has not had a rate increase since, since 2017, so investing in renewable energy has not caused their rates to go up. LES's rates, as Councilwoman Ward knows, are among the lowest in the United States and definitely the lowest in the region. The, in addition, I also wanted to talk a little bit about what Mr. Benson talked about. I have a quote from him. "In the end, the goal won't directly drive the financial impacts. That will be each of the related decisions that will be made along the way, no different than it would be without a goal." So we have a very responsible board. Board members have a fiduciary responsibility to the community. They are going to continue to make financially responsible decisions for the community of Lincoln. And let me quote from the resolution that was passed by the, by the, the Lincoln Electric System Board on November 20th, 2020. "Whereas the Lincoln Elect, Electric System Board recognizes its role in helping to achieve this community goal while also maintaining high levels of electric system reliability and affordable electric rates." And it goes on to say, and I won't read all of this, but one of the things that they include is they say, "Including a fiscally responsible focus that carefully considers financial impacts to all customers, especially LES customers with low and fixed, fixed incomes." So LES not only has a record of fiscal responsibility, they have pledged to maintain that going forward. So this support that, that the faith leaders have made is not just, it's, of course, it's based upon spiritual and moral reasons for supporting it. It's also based on, in reality. And it looks at the world as it is and says, "This is the best way to go. We owe it to our children. We owe it to our grandchildren. We owe it to future generations to take this action, and we're asking you to take this action now." Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Winston? Nope. Thank you so much for coming down.
Mary Hamilton, up next, Candy Turner.
Hi. Does it matter which one I go to?
No. You can use either.
I'm Mary Hamilton, and I wasn't going to speak, but I thought I would at least talk a little bit about the lady that was from the Audubon Society because I was kind of surprised that she would be in support of wind, windmills and wind energy because 2,000 golden eagles have been killed by wind turbines and also millions of birds every year are killed by these wind turbines. Also, I was going to speak from something that, that, somebody that I really respect now, I never used to, but I really respect what he has to say, but Rush Limbaugh was interviewed by Rose, Charlie Rose, in 1992. And in 1992, he said, "The militant environmental movement is the home of the new socialists in America, and they're after the punishment of America, and America's responsible for all this." That's what Limbaugh said. When Rose asked, "We're out to socialize America," Limbaugh said, "Damn right. Here's how. Here's how, Charlie. To socialize America, the first thing you do is say America's responsible for the destruction of the planet. It's Americans' lifestyles, hairspray, it's smokestacks," the radio host explained. Rose dodged, asking if Limbaugh was denying that there is any pollution that could impact the environment. "I am saying that the variety of humanity is amazing, the vanity of humanity is amazing to me," the conservative radio talk show host responded. "I do not believe that we have the ability to destroy this marvelous creation. We can damage it, but we can make a mess by existing, and we're the ones who can fix it." And you need freedom. You need democracy. You need technol- You need technological advancement. You don't need rolling back the progress in order to fix these things, and that's what these people want to do," Limbaugh explained. Rush Limbaugh has been remarkably consistent, and he was right in 1992, just as he is today. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Candy Turner, next, Alina Newman.
Again, well, as everybody else will pretty much testify to, five minutes is nowhere near enough time to detail every questionable idea within this Climate Action Plan. The very first thing I would say is that in the middle of a declaration of emergency, which is being passed off as financial because we are so strapped for cash, probably the worst time to give an Omaha company $97,000 to perform this study and then another almost $120,000 for Mickey's salary to implement it. How strapped for cash are we? It's like when you loan somebody 10 bucks because they say they're starving and then find out they're going to the liquor store. I am not against diversification of our energy grid, to an extent. I myself have systems in place for backup and camping, which include a custom solar system, propane heat, a gas generator with appropriate measures to power both 120 and 220 volt appliances. All these things can be used to power my entire house in the event that there is a power shortage. I hope I never need to use them, but sadly, since I've moved to Lincoln, I have lost power in my home more often than while I was living 30 miles out in the middle of nowhere in the sand hills of Nebraska. I cannot trust Lincoln, on this date, to reliably supply power to my home. That's silly. My son lives in Fort Worth, so I'm acutely aware of how dangerous it is for a community when the government decides to diversify their energy grid. In 2011, Governor Rick Perry decided to move their energy grid towards 25% renewable energy within 10 years. That became a problem when Mother Nature decided to do what she does, and she threw snow at places that don't normally have snow. It wasn't climate change. Texas had that exact same kind of snowstorm on February 2nd, 2011. The difference in 2021, 10 years later, was renewable energy. It simply not as reliable. From one week to the next, the wind turbines dropped from 8,000 megawatt hours power output to 600 megawatts. That's a 92% drop in output in one week, fully measurable on Department of Energy website. Every other form of energy performed the same except wind. That one component failing caused people to freeze to death in their homes. Because of the practice of selling shares in power grids, we had blackouts here in Nebraska. Why am I worried about Texas's power grid and their diversity? Because it is a fantastic warning to what dangers exist if we diversify more than we already are. Texas, a state rich in oil and gas, chose to move to 25%. Now, according to the LES site, our current diversification is coal 31%, natural gas 35%, renewables 34%, already more than Texas. It's a whole lot of hoping and praying that Mother Nature doesn't decide that we're going to have a tornado or a snowstorm or an ice storm or a hailstorm. Each of those things happen every year, and it will knock a renewable system offline. It's not climate change, it's normal Nebraska weather. When a wind turbine stops spinning, the current dies. When acres of solar panels are covered in snow, they generate no electricity. When hail hits a panel and breaks it, we get no power. As it stands right now, battery technology is just nowhere near what we need to produce the energy to power our city. It's just not. It's not going to be there for decades. It's just not going to support changing over large portions of our buildings and entire fleets of vehicles to try and depend on them. The climate plan attempts to aggressively move us towards unreliable sources of power. The astronomical cost associated with this move will put us all in the poorhouse. In Europe, where there are almost entirely green energy, their costs are four to five times higher. We will absolutely have that happen here. I am on the list for the Tesla truck, but I'm sure as hell not going to get it if all of this passes. I do not want to pay $900 for a single charge to my Tesla like they saw in Texas last month. And I know I'm running short on time, but I just want to make one more point, and it's about how green energy is made. The components to make many of these things are not found within the borders of the U.S. Are any of you aware of the large amounts of slavery involved with the acquisition of the special materials needed to make green energy products? Like the gentleman before me said, bauxite is a main component of solar panels. 90% of bauxite is mined in the Congo by child slaves. Lithium batteries, same thing. We need special types of quartz and coal. Very little is found within our borders where we have methods to stop child slavery. Proving this plan would contribute to child slavery. I don't want that on my conscience. And I also want to make a point about government plans to those in minority communities, which the gentleman before me spoke of. I remember when one of those wonderful programs helped my ex-in-laws in their home, poorly inefficient drafty windows, doors, everything like that. Hey, the government's got this plan. They're helping out all of the natives. We are going to change your windows out and make everything great for you. That's awesome. So they signed up for the plan. You know what then ended up happening? They boarded up one-third of their windows and one of their exit doors, plywood caulk around the outside of it. You've got to be careful what you wish for when you have the government take care of you.
Good evening. I got a write this time. It's evening. My name is Dr. Alina Newman. I am a conservative independent candidate in the upcoming city council election. I am in favor of what the city wants to do within its fiduciary responsibility to help the environment, installing solar panels on top of the buildings, utilizing electric cars. I'm in favor of citizens of their own accord and within their fiduciary responsibility doing what they feel is necessary to help the environment, recycling, watching sprinkler water use by installing rain sensors and the like. I'm out for colleges, working to create a viable workforce. I do not support citizens being told how they can use utilities within their home, what appliances they buy, and the like. I lived in a country where this exact thing happened. Trust me, it's not what you want. That's why I came here, and I can't do it again. Our infrastructure is not where it needs to be. It's not even close. We're not even able to handle our roads, let alone a plan such as this. There are too many big projects that deserve their own discussions. People are struggling with the pandemic physically, mentally, emotionally, socially. Y'all just last week didn't know when we're going to return to normal. No one is able to give us, citizens, that answer. All the information is vague, no exact values for anything. If we don't know that answer after a whole year, how can we predict as far as we're predicting into this plan? We can't operate on a whole lot of what-ifs. That's not how life works. We need to be data-driven, specific numbers, specific items, specific timelines. The plan is too nebulous. There are too many variables, too many unknowns. There's not a single cost associated with any of the items. As a budget-responsible citizen who lives in this community, I know approximately how much taxes I will pay every year. How can a plan such as this not have any estimates or cost projections? This plan is a huge cost to businesses, businesses who are already struggling. Many small businesses have gone out of business. Our economy needs TLC. We cannot afford to do something like this right now. People cannot afford their rent, let alone anything else at this point. This is another way that Lincoln will become unaffordable to live, work, or raise a family. We're trying to make Lincoln a better place to live, yet at the same time, we're making it literally impossible. This is the very definition of self-sabotage. This plan opens up just another avenue to say one thing and do another thing. COVID has shed a light on what's happening, and people are now questioning everything. Trust in government, for the most part, is non-existent. How will people be in charge, be held accountable? This has been evident with the DHM, where rules are there, but most choose not to follow the entire thing. This past year has been nothing but do's and don'ts, and our community's mental health is deteriorating. And yet, we are not addressing mental health in this city at all. Maybe some of the funding that went into this plan should have been used for that instead. At the end of the day, as a citizen of this city, I am against this plan because I don't know what to expect. I don't have data. I have other people's hopes and dreams. I would love to be convinced otherwise. How can I be assured that I will not be once again taken advantage of? How can I be assured that I will not relive what I fled when I came to the U.S. 26 years ago? Granted, I will probably never see retirement, but I refuse to be okay with that being my daughter's legacy. How can I be sure that my child and grandchildren will enjoy their life? Thank you.
Thank you. Is that the last one on the list?
Yes. Just for one more call, is there anyone else here that would like to come forward and testify on item 5A?
Is there anybody else that'd like to come forward back there? Seeing none, would you like to come on back up and read but...
Thank you so much, City Council. Wow. That was interesting testimony. Both, you can see the juxtaposition of where people are in general in our city. And I just want to state for the record that I hear everyone's concern, I hear everyone's opinions, and I do take all of that in to consideration. And I'm genuinely interested in hearing back from our community. With that, I also know that there is a large group of people who are very supportive of taking this next step. And it's a lot. I get that. So, I want to say one thing about costs. They are important. They're extremely important, as you know. And the history of robust planning and process that this city has, I understand that there are people both unfamiliar with that process as well as being uncomfortable with that process. But the truth is, that is why I am seeking your approval today. I have to have this vision, this strategic plan, this alignment with the comp plan to further investigate costs for those 20 items. So this is our process. This is the city process. Public policy development precedes the public funding discussion and the decision-making by this body. That is the Lincoln way, and it is iterative. And I'm trying, as much as everyone else here, to honor that iterative process. And during that process, we bring the community along at every step. LES is very similar. They understand that they don't have all the answers today and that technology will have to be there to support that 2040 goal, and we work slowly and steadily and methodically toward the achievement of something, some target, some outcome, some objective, because at this moment, we don't have one. And yet, this is already costing us. So this is just step one in an iterative process, and the argument that we can't set goals and targets and vision for something better for our community, have objectives. With your approval today, I can move forward with the very process that is sought. It's both required and sought. I'm seeking your permission to do that next step on those 20 items, to investigate them further, have more process with our community, bring stakeholders to the table. That is what I'm asking your permission to do tonight. And when appropriate, and we have identified other sources of funds, when appropriate, we have identified what those rates or those taxpayer dollars will look like and what those investments are specifically, what they specifically are, we will bring those forward to you during a budget resolution, during a rate decision, during a CIP amendment. That process is to follow. And we will bring our community along in those conversations about a second source, about the Salt Creek Resiliency Study, about the decarbonization goal. We have a strong history of prudent fiscal decisions, and when I say "we," I'm not just talking about the administration or departments. It's this body who makes these determinations at the time of budget. In the face of major investment challenges, there have been prudent fiscal decisions made, and it shows up in the data over and over again. Over 2 million for drought mitigation, and yet we held rates steady at under 5%. LES made investments in renewable sources of energy and power, and yet they held rates down below 1%. That's not unremarkable. That takes a lot of thought, and it takes a lot of mindful process to get where we need to go, to both secure our city, protect public infrastructure, public safety, and public health while making mindful and prudent fiscal decisions. That's what we do. My second point is that we know that not doing anything just costs much more. We've experienced a 2012 drought while I was L.T.U. Director. That was baptism by fire. We had to implement mandatory water restrictions. It was terrible. We were very close to running out. The 2014-15 back-to-back flooding events in low-income, historically marginalized communities, we had to evacuate whole communities, and they were left with property damage. A 2019 Platte River flood from a bomb cyclone. That is real. That happened across our state, and we were impacted. Recently, rolling blackouts due to a polar vortex. I don't even know, these words are so new to me and so new to the community. We can't just make things up as we go and figure it out. We have to have a plan and a strategy and a vision. It's already costing us. That's what people come up and they share their concern about. What is this plan going to cost? What they have to realize is this is already costing us millions and billions of dollars by doing nothing. So without a plan, we also miss out on any opportunity to leverage state and federal or other funding, grant funding that may be available. You know, in the Second Source of Water Supply Strategy, it doesn't say, "Secure a second source of water supply," which is $1 billion. It says, "Develop a strategy to secure a second source." That includes talking to our federal delegation about not just a local problem, but a regional one. We have got to have more redundancy in our water system to protect our citizens, our businesses, to grow economic development, to thrive into the future. I'm not going to sit idly by and let the money, what, trickle down through rates, local rates? No, we need to press our federal delegation, our state delegates, to help us. So we want to take that step forward with your permission, to develop that strategy and bring those sources of funds home. That's what we're asking you to do. A failure to plan is a plan to fail. And that's what we're asking for, a plan. You know, any objection to costs to address climate risks, I think is so interesting, and maybe it depends on whether you believe that climate change is happening or not, and that skews your perspective. But any objection to costs to address climate risks is like saying, you know, we may be at risk for crime, but we shouldn't hire officers because it costs money. We may be at risk for illness, but, you know, we shouldn't build hospitals because it costs money. Serving people costs money. Service delivery of programs and projects, major infrastructure that we provide to people to give them more freedoms, more livelihood, more quality of life, more safety. It costs money to do that. And so, that objection is a red herring. And I truly beg you to look past that. Just know and trust that I will bring those 20 items forward to you with cost information, detailed scope with... detailed scope with rate information that is detailed, to talk through how it impacts our citizens. And we will do that mindfully, just as we've done in history. And I need this council action to take that step. That's what I want people to understand about our city processes. When you find alignment and conformity with the 2040 comp plan, it allows me to take that next step of investigation and to bring that back to you in a future budget, CIP amendment, bond resolution. You have all the ability to hear more from me on those detailed things. And I promise you, and our staff promises you, to bring that information forward when the time is right. It's like a piece of fruit. You pick it when it's ripe, and it's premature at this moment, and I'm, that's our process. I have to live with it, just like everybody else. Ultimately, this plan, it proposes to do what we've always done, plan for the weather. We've always done that. We've always been proactive. And now, what we're planning for that's different is just the frequency, severity and intensity of what we're planning for. So we want to support public health, public safety and public infrastructure. This plan does help protect vulnerable communities from climate impacts. It preserves our way of life, both now and for future generations. But it also mitigates risk and avoids costly impact. But we can also see some economic opportunities, if they are out there for us to seize upon, growing jobs and business, as well as opening markets to be more competitive. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and I think I have some backup if you need it to.
Do we have any questions for Mickey? Okay. Counselperson Washington.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. I have a question. Mike Eckert came up a couple of hours ago and talked about items 52 and 53, implementing the recommendations of the Salt Creek Resiliency Study. And could you refresh my memory and tell me, the Salt Creek Resiliency Study, has it been approved yet by another, by us in an earlier meeting? Has it been approved by the Planning Commission?
No, it is merely a consultant study at this point. And again, the, that is part of the amendment. It's a very important amendment in this process that we are working with a stakeholder group to come up with what the standards will be. And those stakeholders include developers and builders. They should be at the table to help shape those standards, if any. I mean, Mike kind of said, you know, "We do a lot." And so those are conversations that we still need to have. But we're just now reacting to a study that was completed, I think it was the end of last year. And in that study, we had some increase in precipitation data and an increase in national standards that we use for that precipitation data. So we have to respond because it changes the outcome of our planning, our former planning, where we're about two foot above where we thought we were. Donna can talk a little bit more specifically, if you want to talk about the study detail. But just know, we're reacting to a study, and the study made some recommendations to the city. And now, we want to take that next step with those impacted stakeholders. We know those conversations are really important, and they're going to help shape those rules. And the rules, again, would come forward to a city council, if any.
Well, I appreciate the stakeholders being involved in the conversation and making those statements, but I think I need to understand, is a vote for the Climate Action Plan an approval of the study and acceptance of the study? Because I'd like to know if that study was going to be on a different pathway, where we would see it separately, and we would make a decision about that study in its own path?
It will not. It's not like a comp plan or the Affordable Housing Plan. So the study was a consultant study that advises the department. It wasn't on track to be approved by the city council, and this action doesn't approve the study. What this action does is say to proceed with a stakeholder group to develop and further develop standards, recommendations, look at structural measures, do cost-benefit analysis. I'm trying to pull this up as well.
Yeah, okay. I'm, that's, that is clarification, but when I'm looking at, and I'm, Scott, the amendments this afternoon before the meeting, just ahead of the meeting, and so I am trying to put what I see on paper, implement the recommendations of the study.
Oh, that language changed. Do you have the amended language?
I am, we got the amended language just, you know, at 2:30, just a second.
Do you have engage in a public engagement process to review and assess implementation of recommendations of the Salt Creek Resiliency Study? Yes, that.
Thank you.
And I'd like to add, if you read further in the amendment, it talks about, "Conduct a benefit-cost analysis of implementing structural measures to address stormwater runoff modeled upon updated precipitation data." And that's from NOAA.
Yeah, I see that, and I'm trying to put that up against, because I thought Mike Eckert was in this group who had proposed amendments, but he came forward still and was not in support of his language?
Oh, I didn't hear, I didn't hear it that way. I think he was, I thought he was testifying that he wanted to be a part of the process and the next steps.
Okay. That he wanted to be part of the process, not that it was...
I mean, he wasn't up here endorsing it or any, endorsing the Salt Creek Resiliency Study. He is questioning it, he wants to be a part of the process and can at least get behind... Oh, great, Mike!
Mr. Eckert, would you mind? Mr. Chairman, I realize I might be out of order in asking someone justified to come forward.
We'll go ahead and allow it.
Thank you, Mike Eckert, Civil Design Group. You ask a very good question. And the answer is yes. I am testifying and thanking Mickey for changing it to have us be a part of a further discussion. But if those notes wouldn't have not been changed, I feel like it effectively blessed the study and put it in the comp plan. With the language change, we're happy and we're going to be very eager to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. That clarifies it. That was my one question.
We're going to see a lot of Mike. Maybe Mr. Krueger, too.
Any other questions? Yes, counselperson Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Esposito, especially for spending so much time on explaining the cost, because you and I spoke briefly about that last week. I just have to say, that's troubled me the most. I'm a fiscal conservative. That's where I've gotten the most traffic from people that have written to me. So I do understand it's the process, but it's also troubled me the most. So thank you for explaining that process. I think a lot of people are, have been justified today in asking us about that. And I think a lot of us, whether you're a policymaker or not, are used to working with fiscal notes that are before us when we have something of this magnitude. So I really appreciate your taking that time to talk about that. I have a specific question that came up a couple of times today that I would like some help understanding how the plan addresses, there were concerns about it would weaken our grid if we were to adopt the plan, it would weaken the grid. I heard that several times. What's your opinion of that, and why would that come up to people?
You know, it's interesting. I have a lot of faith in LES, not only because they're so well-run and they've been such a reliable source of energy for such a very long time. These are their decisions, and the board adopted goal for 2040. Again, Scott's right, it stands alone. And what I know about LES is that they make those fiscally prudent decisions while maintaining reliability and affordability. The board approved the 2040 goal with that in mind. I think what is on the horizon, however, and what even LES knows, and how it intends to mitigate cost, but also make sure and ensure that we have reliability, is that the technology is coming, and they know that. They know they, you know, it was unlikely to reach a 2030 goal. But with respect to renewable energy, we have to have storage capability. And until that time, storage capability at scale. And until that time, it would be fiscally imprudent for them to take that and rush in to the renewable sources. So we are asking people, take a look at their history, take a look at their record for how they do this, how they set rates commensurate to those investments, and understand that their history shapes also this future and how they plan to make decisions. The other thing that is changing, and there's a lot of research and development around, is hydrogen and the future of that. We need, we need the benefit of 10 years or more to see where that technology goes and how it grows. We know that, you know, large-scale battery, battery storage could be there for us in the next five to 10 years. So we need the benefit of time, R&amp;D, more research and development, to make sure these investments are affordable for people, and that we don't, you know, jeopardize reliability. So, and I think Scott is here, there he is. We can put him on the spot again if you'd like, but I think it might be fear and confusion. I think Texas was a scary situation for lots of people, but remember that that was about winterization choices and a lack of investment that put them in that position.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions for Mickey at this point?
Thank you so much.
Okay, seeing none. Anybody else like to come? Well, we've already gone through the public here. And I don't see anybody else, so let's move on to the next items.
Item 5B is Use Permit 20010A, Application of TNNG LLC to amend Use Permit 20010 to reduce front yard setback along South 27th Street, which would allow parking in the front yard on property generally located at 5620 South 27th Street.
Mr. Marshall, I presume?
Good evening, now. I feel like I was running up here after being out there for a couple of hours. I'm here on behalf of the owner. This admittedly is kind of an error that transpired between final plat and use permit, and we have, I'll explain that really quick. So TNNG Health has purchased now the, the extra property there at the fire station on 27th and Old Cheney. During the process, it was negotiated as part of the right-of-way, and then a final plat had to come forward, and the final plat parceled that property off for sale. As part of that, there was some confusion about the right-of-way that was actually going to be dedicated on Old Cheney and 27th. What happened was, the city thought that they were okay on 27th Street with what they had. A dimension was taken off on the final plat and dedicated 10 additional feet on 27th Street. We worked with the city planning and law departments on a couple of options, and we selected a setback reduction along 27th Street. You'll notice, or I'll remind you, on the, on the use permit that previously had come forward to you, there was a, there was a setback reduction that was approved along Old Cheney. So we thought it was probably easiest to apply that setback reduction along 27th Street. That would essentially make up for the 10 feet that was dedicated for, dedicated with the final plat as right-of-way. Therefore, their buildable area doesn't change as a net. So that is why I'm here tonight, is to correct that error, hopefully. And with that, I will answer any questions you may have about this.
Do we have any questions for Brad? Yes, counselperson Washington.
Thank you. Microphone. Thank you. I think I understand what you just said. When I looked at the plat and I saw the setback and that it, there was a line of parking spaces that face 27th Street, what I didn't see in the revised plat was landscape. And I was curious, just for headlight issues, will you be putting in landscaping? And I recognize there's a corner there, it's already a no right turn on red.
Right.
But, I mean, I realize there's some sightline issues, but I have some concerns about headlights in those parking spaces right into the traffic.
And the answer is really straightforward. There are parking lot screening standards.
Okay.
So that would have to be complied regardless of the setback reduction.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. Are you planning on doing any birmingham or just landscaping?
Just landscaping. There might be, in 10 feet, you can't really raise too much.
That's what I was wondering, since you're running out of space there.
There may be planting beds and so forth that would, would go along with the landscaping.
Across the street in the retail center, you require, they required birmingham and landscaping? Okay. It's an old favorite sight of mine. Okay, tell you stories about it, but that's okay. Any other questions for Brad? Any questions for David? Not seeing any?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward on this item, 5H? I don't see anybody coming in there. Okay. We can move on to the next one.
Item 5C is Public hearing for purposes of Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code and related resolution, authorizing the issuance by the City of Educational Facilities Revenue Refunding Bonds Nebraska Wesleyan University project. In one or more series in a principal amount not to exceed $13,500,000 for the purpose of making a loan to Nebraska Wesleyan University to refinance certain outstanding bonds of the city, authorizing the execution and delivery of the documents in connection with the issuance of such bonds and improving related matters.
Okay.
Good evening, President McGinnis, members of the council. My name is Mike Rogers. I'm bond counsel for the city, and I'm here on this resolution, which would authorize the city to issue bonds for the benefit of Nebraska Wesleyan University. As you may be aware, the city is authorized to serve as conduit issuer for nonprofit enterprises. This is one of those instances where the city has done this in the past for Nebraska Wesleyan. In 2012, bonds were issued for the benefit of Nebraska Wesleyan, and the resolution before you is to refinance those outstanding bonds for Nebraska Wesleyan as borrower to save, save money, reduce their interest costs and save money. So that's basically what this resolution does. It's, it's authorizing refunding of bonds that are already outstanding issued by the city. And importantly, the statutes that the bonds are issued under provide clearly that there would be no pecuniary liability of the city with respect to these bonds. All repayment obligations are, are with Nebraska Wesleyan University as borrower. So, so the city is purely acting as what's called conduit issuer here in order for this financing to bear tax-exempt interest.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Rogers?
And I might mention that Tish Gay Jones, the Chief Financial Officer for Nebraska Wesleyan, is here as well to say a few words.
Okay. Any questions for...
And I'll, I'll wait, too, if there are any questions.
Okay. Would you like to speak?
Sure, I would love to speak. I'll get this short, I know I'm on for you guys. Appreciate it. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Tish Gay Jones. I'm the Vice President of Finance and Administration at Nebraska Wesleyan University. First, thank you for agreeing to service issuer of the financing. As Mike had mentioned, we are refinancing the 2012 bond issue, which was issued for several campus projects. several campus projects, including residence halls, parking facilities, health and fitness center, and information technology. We are refinancing these bonds to take advantage of the current interest rates, and our expectations that we're hoping to save over a million dollars with this refunding, which will be a great asset for our university community. So, thanks again, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Jones? No. Thank you for coming down.
Yeah.
David Young, interim finance person. We support, staff supports the request made.
Okay. We have any questions for Mr. Young? I want you to stick around all night, just in case. Anybody else like to come forward on this item at this time? 5C? Seeing none. We move on to voting for the resolutions.
Item 5A is Comprehensive Plan Amendment 21001, Application of the Mayor's Office to amend the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan to adopt and incorporate into the Comprehensive Plan the City of Lincoln Climate Action Plan, introduced by Bowers.
So moved?
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded by Councilperson Raybold. Do we have any questions? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, in the last couple of weeks, there have been a lot of comments on the action plan that had been issued a while ago with some changes, and we got the motion to amend earlier this afternoon. After I asked my last question, I feel very good about all of the motions, all of the changes in the plan, and I'd like to offer a motion.
Seconded. You're going to offer a motion to amend?
I'd like to offer a motion to amend.
And I will second that.
And, yes. Motion to amend number one, correct?
Yes, to number one.
Has been moved and seconded by Councilperson Raybold. Do we have any comments on the motion to amend? Yes. Councilperson Christensen.
Well, considering that I just got this final draft moments before this meeting began, the public has not had an opportunity to look at it. I'm going to move that this whole thing go, be moved to next week for action only, but giving the citizens a chance to take a look at it and comment to us by mail.
It's been moved?
I'll second that.
And seconded?
Wait, you have a motion?
I have a motion.
On to amend?
To amend.
So.
So, I think we have a second motion.
Is this, are you saying that this is a friendly amendment?
No.
Okay.
It's, it's just another amendment.
Okay. So, you're the second motion to amend.
To delay a week.
To delay everything on this for one week.
With action only.
Action only. That will give the public a chance to look at this and comment to us on it. I mean, we haven't even had it very long, so.
It's been moved and seconded that we delay motion to amend and the motion till next week. Any other comments or questions? Please, let's go ahead and call the roll then.
On which one?
On to delay a week.
His first, she first.
Yeah.
To delay, to take action on the amendment, or you're saying you want to, I guess I'm confused because of the order of, of the, what, what is the matter on the floor?
You take the last one. If, if we had a motion to amend, we, and then we have a motion?
Can we move the motion to amend and then deal with the motion to delay?
He would like to delay the motion to amend.
Yes.
And so, that's been moved and seconded, so we need to vote on the motion to delay a week. That is on this one. No, because we don't want to vote it for delaying it a week. Where's our attorney? Pretty simple. We'll wait for Johansson.
I guess my point is that, you know, we might want to change this motion to amend based on public input during the week.
Okay.
I heard, Johansson Christie, city attorney. I heard most of it.
Okay. We have two motions, or we have the main motion, and then we had an amendment, and then we had a motion to delay the amendment for one week.
Okay. You didn't want to just withdraw the motion to amend and then, that's not where we're at?
No. We're, right now, we're at the point where either do we want to vote to delay this for a week or not? Is that your question? Councilperson Washington?
I believe that for the same reasons that Mr. Christensen has suggested, that there, there is a lot here in the motion to amend. And he's right, we got one motion to amend at 2 something, and we got the final motion to amend later, but before 3 o'clock. The public has not had a chance to look at all of the changes, all of the motions to amend. I will, I will withdraw the motion to amend number one and hold it back for one week. Or at least I will hold it back until after we voted on the delay. Can we do that?
No.
No.
We have the motion on the table.
And there's a second.
And there's a second. So, we have to act on it, one way or the other. Either we delay it and then, or then we got to act on it, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think if there, if, motion to amend, and then there's a motion to delay the vote on that and set it for action, is that what?
Correct. Until next week.
You can vote on that.
Yeah, that's, we'd be voted on first, right?
The question was the order of what's amended.
Just the order. I can't withdraw a motion, Rule 313-7?
You should be able to withdraw the.
You can withdraw a motion, but you need.
Motion to amend, and then I think Mr. Christensen can introduce a motion to, to request a delay of the vote and delay to next week for action only pending emailed feedback from constituents. Do I have that correct?
But I motioned to, and got a second, to delay the amendment.
Correct. So, we have to vote on that.
Yeah, I think so. I, I was asking if, I didn't realize that there's, I said I missed part of it. So, there was a motion and there's a second on that, you need to act on that. But I was just saying, before you got to the delay, I didn't know if you just wanted to withdraw it and then delay everything, but.
I guess we can't do that. I can't withdraw.
No. We've already done an action on that item.
Okay.
So, we're going to vote on Mr. Christensen's?
Chance to delay, and then.
Delay the.
If that doesn't pass, then you might be able to do something.
But the question was, which, which can, should we do first? Because she made her motion before he did.
Well, I thought that, I thought that the chair, you were saying that we were going to vote on Christensen's motion, right?
Yes.
That's what, that's what you're saying.
We're going to do.
I think that's all right.
Because you can't vote something in that you're going to delay till next week to vote in.
That is true. Why not?
So.
Are you ruling that, Richard?
Yes, I am.
So, could we get a, could we please get a clarification of the motion then?
The motion? Okay. Yeah.
I ask that this motion to amend number one be delayed for action only until next week.
For action only?
For action only. That will give the public a chance to give us some input by email or phone calls or whatever they want, however they want to touch, reach out to council members.
Yes. Councilperson Washington.
I have a question about that. If it's for action only, it's for action only in this gen, in this form?
We could amend it.
Not additional comments?
Right. No, we can make changes up until we vote on it.
Okay. So, we can still make changes?
We can still make changes.
So, comments can be incorporated?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. All right.
Okay. Yes. Councilperson Ward?
No.
Oh. You have something to say?
Let me ask one question. I just wanted to clarify with the clerk for record.
Okay. What was there? Okay. So, the motion is to delay until next week for vote only?
On the amendment and on the resolution.
On the amendment and?
Amendment and resolution. To, to, to be clear, correct?
Well, if we delay the motion to amend number one, then I think there are some people here who will want to delay the whole thing. That's not what I moved, though.
Well, you.
We can make another motion to delay the main amendment, if you want, if this passes.
Okay. I thought you were moving to delay.
Just the motion to amend.
Just the motion to amend.
So, just for clerical purposes, if I could just ask and also make sure that we all understand, currently, Councilman Christensen is making a motion to amend to delay the amendment for one week for action only, only on the amendment.
Right.
So, we'll carry this amendment till next week. At that point in time, then there will be action only, and if everything is okay, we will then vote on the main motion as well, if everything is fit.
I think that will take a second action. Yes, that will take another action.
Okay. Just for clarification. Thank you.
Got it? Okay. So, the motion is to delay one week, the motion to amend. Any other comments? Kind of what it was at the beginning. Okay. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Bowers?
No.
Ward?
No.
No. Raybold?
No.
Washington? Oh, excuse me.
Did I vote twice?
I'm sorry.
Two votes.
McGinnis?
Uh, no.
Motion lost.
Okay. So, we got the motion to amend number one in front of us.
Correct.
Do we have any other discussions on motion to amend number one? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ward?
At the point of, are we voting on this amendment now?
We're voting on the amendment.
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, 6-1.
Now, we have the amended motion.
5-1.
Oh, excuse me, 5-1.
Now, we have the amended motion. Main motion.
Correct.
Yes. Councilperson Christensen.
I believe that climate change is real, and it is our responsibility as stewards to do what we can to limit the damage to our environment. I believe in environmental stewardship. There are a significant number of businesses and citizens who have, still have serious reservations about this. Even the Chamber of Commerce, who participated significantly in the crafting of this document, did not endorse it in a letter to the mayor, and they listed as their reasons for not endorsing it unanswered questions about the cost of action, the cost of inaction, the impact on Lincoln's environment, or, excuse me, on the impact on Lincoln's economy. I have, still have serious concerns about the low-income families, people, seniors on fixed incomes and small businesses. Some of the aspects of this plan, I believe, go too far, and some do not go far enough. I believe this plan could be made better by being narrowed, by being cost-defined, and ultimately being affordable to all Lincoln citizens.
Councilperson Raybold?
Thank you. Climate change is real. It's us. It's bad. Scientists agree. There's hope. I borrowed that from Ken Har and several other scientists. You know, like many other businesses across Lincoln, we know that sustainability and resiliency make good business sense and also improves our bottom line. I do cost-benefit analysis for our company for every type of equipment we purchase and energy efficiencies, and I've been doing that for the last 18 years. The city of Lincoln also does cost-benefit analysis when it comes to projects and programs, and they demonstrate that to us every time we take a vote on these matters, every time there is a cost impact to our citizens. The cost of inaction is too, too great. Our company, we invest in LED lighting and energy-efficient cases, and I can go on and on about the innovations that we have embraced. Once we've studied the cost and taken the time to review and assess, is this beneficial to our company? And the actions we take on city council, will this be beneficial to our constituents? As we grow as a company, we have actually reduced our energy usage. That's being a good steward. That's being a good conservationist. That's what Lincoln Electric System has done as well, while keeping the cost to its customers low by embracing innovations, by embracing technology when it happens, and doing the mindful cost-benefit analysis, so that those that would be most impacted, that we all have talked about this evening, are not suffering the greatest burden. You know, we continuously research ways to be better stewards of our environment by reducing landfill waste and energy consumption, whether it's diverting waste from the landfill, conserving energy, or using new and innovative technologies to improve operations, sustainability, and resiliency. That's just good business. And if we didn't do all these initiatives and efforts, we couldn't be competitive in a very competitive industry. We must stay competitive and relevant as change and climate change is happening all around us. Every industry, every industry, every major employer in the city of Lincoln, their own individual business is embracing innovation and technology to be better stewards, to use less water in their production, to use less material, to, to have less waste. You know, and it's not just the grocery industry. Even our Public Building Commission, that manages the buildings for the city and the county, we have a dashboard that monitors our utilities in real time, trying to determine which of the buildings has energy inefficiencies, which of the buildings are energy hogs. How can we crack down on, do they need better insulation? Do we need to change out the LED? Do we need to change out fluorescent lighting and do LED throughout the buildings, which we are doing systematically, which we have done to the parking lot, which the city of Lincoln has done with the street lamps in Lincoln? Really, to, to be more energy efficient and to be better stewards. And you know, that is why there is so much hope. We embrace these values, these Nebraska values of being frugal by being creative. I think Chuck Hessebrook said it the best. This is what farmers have been doing for centuries. This is what my, my grandparents were doing on their farms as well. We do this because it leads to savings. Savings in the short term and savings in the long term. But because these values build a strong, resilient community, a community that cooperates, that builds for the future, I'm excited about this climate action plan and for our community's future that we as businesses can work together on and continue to build on. I wholeheartedly support this plan.
Thank you. Councilperson Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I support the plan as well, and I just want to say, it didn't come up this afternoon. Well, first, I just want to reiterate, the costs are troubling to me because we don't know, but we do have to have an action plan so we can leverage some state and federal dollars so we can implement the plan, and that's important. So, I do trust Mickey Esposito and to deliver on those promises, and I know that she will. She has a proven track record. She has a proven track record in city government. What didn't come up, and another reason I support the plan, is the, Councilwoman Raybold touched on it, but the urban agriculture component. If we learn nothing in this past year about food insecurity, I don't know when we will, but during COVID, you can run into anybody that works at the food bank, starting with Scott Young Center for People in Need, and so there is a major component that I wholeheartedly support of urban agriculture that will help serve those in need in our community, and that is very important to me. So it's a good framework. We need to keep up with cities our size in the country. We can't let Lincoln get behind, and I know that we'll have a lot more come before the council to stay on top of it. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilperson Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There have been a lot of comments this evening, and I can hear how concerned, fearful folks are about this plan and about what this plan says. I don't think this plan says that we are giving up any freedom. This plan has a lot of different initiatives and strategies that suggest ways we might go about becoming more prepared, better prepared. The climate action plan points us in a direction. It is not dictating very many things right now. Most of the things in the climate action plan are things that are happening right now, and it's just a continuation of those kinds of activities. In the seventeen, eighteen, twenty areas where the plan says they're new, they're looking for new authorities and new funding, each of which will come to force with cost-benefit analysis and much more detail. What I like most about this plan is that it takes into consideration every step of the way public involvement and input by stakeholders and the folks who are most likely to be impacted by any of these actions or programs. Climate action is happening, and at some point, it doesn't matter why it's happening. We have to just accept the fact that it is happening. And one of the things that I grew up knowing is that we should always prepare ourselves to deal with an uncertain future. We know that things are getting warmer, wetter, more severe. As Miki said, she talked about duration, frequency, intensity. Those are the things we know are going to happen. And true, we don't know when that storm is going to happen. But it is better that we have lots of different ways, a full menu of choices for how we become more resilient and stronger. Sustainability isn't just about environmental sustainability. It's also about economic sustainability. And what I want most for Lincoln is a community that is able to be sustained in the long run for generations, and in a way that makes, guarantees the livelihood and the life of my daughter will be as good as the livelihood and life that I have had. One of the folks commenting talked about, let's not, you know, the amount of work or the amount of space that we have or that we affect in the world is so small because we're such a small part of the pollution problem. And that does not feel very hopeful to me, and it doesn't feel very thoughtful to me. It points mostly to a selfish desire to maintain the life that we have without thinking about how other people are impacted. He also suggested that we focus on keeping Lincoln beautiful. I agree. We should be able to focus on keeping Lincoln beautiful, and many of the initiatives in this program will do just that. If all you like about this program is the fact that we have trees and trails in Lincoln, then focus on that. This climate action plan, as I said, is a direction and gives us many ways to get there. I support it.
Anybody else?
I have a couple of comments. Been through this, when this first came out in the big hundred and eighty, hundred and ninety pages, it was just too much. I just got frustrated as I read through it. And as I kept going through it, I guess I just kept saying, well, I guess this is the way it's going to go. I was more concerned about their economy for Lincoln. I've grown up here. I didn't want our economy to all of a sudden do a pivot, move a hundred and eighty degrees, and start going the other way because of something that we've done and that we would do, and more regulations, more rules. And a lot of this plan originally said, we must implement. We must use these regulations. And this amendment today took most of those out. So that was, that was helpful in what, and, but, you know, there's, there's going to be canaries in the mine for me. If one starts to drop, and they start to drop, this plan better be adoptable and adaptable, I mean, and be able to move. And that's what kind of gives me some concern at this point. Mr. Frye and Mr. Blythe made great speeches. They talked just general, and it swayed me a little bit. There's still some bad things, I think, in this plan, but I'm just one of many of seven. And so there's still some things in here, these complete streets. I mean, if we have to implement and completely fund complete streets, we're taking money out of streets for other projects. Instead of doing a five million dollars a mile, it's going to be seven dollars a mile, seven million a mile, and we'll be doing less streetwork because of this certain things. I'm hoping that if we go forward with this, that we can get cost-benefits analysis on a lot of that. Again, there are some other things in here that, I don't know. I don't know if they're, you know, fatal flaws in the, in the plan for me. The biggest one, though, by far, was a Salt Creek resiliency that we had to implement, a study that we hadn't even had a good chance to review. And so I think the motion to amend has kind of given me a renewable hope that this plan may be agile and be able to pivot and move, and we just need to keep progressing on. We need to be able to move, but I have a lot of strong feelings that the citizens of Lincoln will be there to be part of this plan and to keep moving with it. And if there's something, that there's a flaw in here, believe me, we'll point it out, and, and I believe the administration, when they say that, they will be listening to everybody on this plan. So, it's the way I feel today, but...
Any other comments or questions? Okay, please call the roll.
Christensen?
No.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, five one.
Okay, now we can move on to our second reading for ordinances.
We still need to vote on five B and five C.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Item five B is-
Jumping ahead of myself.
Use permit two zero zero one zero A, application of T N N G capital L C, to amend use permit two zero zero one zero to reduce front yard setback along South Twenty-seventh Street, which would allow parking in the front yard on property generally located at fifty-six twenty South Twenty-seventh Street, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Ward. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero. Item five C is public hearing for purposes of section one four seven F of the Internal Revenue Code and related resolution authorizing the issuance by the City of Educational Facilities Revenue Refunding Bonds in one or more series in a principal amount not to exceed thirteen million five hundred thousand for the purpose of making a loan to Nebraska Wesleyan University to refinance certain outstanding bonds of the city, authorizing the execution and delivery of documents in connection with the issuance of such bonds and improving related matters, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second by Councilperson Ward. Any comments? This is a good thing, that we can use the city to help out one of our local colleges in a nice big institution that we're glad to have here in Lincoln. Any other comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion carried, six zero. That ends our public hearing resolutions. We can move on to section six, public hearing ordinances, second reading and related resolutions. I'll be calling item six A and six B together. Change of zone two one zero zero two, application of All-In Acquisition LLC from R two residential district to R two residential landmark designation on property generally located at eighteen forty-five South Eleventh Street. And the related special permit two one zero zero one, application of All-In Acquisitions LLC for historic preservation of the former Yackel Grocery Building in, building to allow for five dwelling units in the R two residential district with waivers to setbacks and parking requirements and to reduce the law area per unit on property generally located at eighteen forty-five South Eleventh Street.
Good evening.
Good evening, council members. Thanks for taking the time to, you know, let us have a moment to present. We came here for some reason that we don't remember anymore. But we had the pleasure of meeting with a lot of you guys last week, and thought we'd show up and just give kind of a brief overview of the project, and then answer any other questions or concerns that may have arisen since.
You need to introduce yourselves.
Oh, Seth Flowerday.
I'm Luke Flowerday. Thanks, sorry about that.
So we purchased the property at eighteen forty-five South Eleventh Street about six, seven months ago, and started to work on the redevelopment of that, ran into the R two residential zoning of that property, and then began work with the planning department to find kind of a solution to that, and we started going down the historic landmark designation route. And so that's what we're seeking, is this, that we basically do the change of zone from an R two designation to an R two with the Lincoln landmark. And then with that, we're asking for a special permit to allow waiver to the lot size setback as well.
Councilperson Christensen?
Seth and Luke, well, we've known each other for-
Been a while.
When you were in high school.
Yeah, yeah, quite a while.
And I'm curious, do you know how long this building has been unoccupied?
Previous six years is what we've got for an estimate. I think it's probably been a little bit longer than that, but the last time that there were building inspections and the last time work was done was 2015. We don't know exactly when before that, but, you know, presumably a year or two prior to that. So it's been vacant for a number of years at this point. We went and went door to door and knocked on the, the immediate neighbors, as well as kind of some, just others in the area, just sort of get their opinions and their input. And they were all aware of the property. They were all aware it had been vacant for a number of years. We're really excited to see something, anything going in there. So they're really supportive.
So this isn't your first project of this type. Could you tell us about some other things you've done?
Yeah, sure. We've done several renovations and restorations of homes throughout the Lincoln area, typically in bad condition like this building. We bought a building at three twenty-five South Eleventh Street in July of 2016 and spent about eighteen months renovating that property as well. We added two commercial units and two two-bedroom apartments that are now fully occupied and contributing to not only the tax basis, but also the cultural fabric of Lincoln in general. We've got those apartments rented at twelve hundred and eleven hundred, so that's kind of the range for the two-bedroom apartments. That's the same range that we plan on targeting for these current two-bedroom units that we're going to be building. So we believe that that is in, you know, sort of the workforce housing and affordable range for a lot of members of the community, that that's something they can afford. The, the one-bedroom apartments on the main floor, we plan to rent five fifty, six hundred. That's what we're kind of shooting for, so.
Councilperson Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Flowerday brothers, I have a question for you about the parking.
Yeah.
So do you have any idea how long the parking has been in the right-of-way kind of attached to that building? I know the building was commercial, and it sort of feels as if the parking was developed-
Right.
-for the building, even if it's not-
Yeah. We don't know exactly how long it's been there as parking. We know that it was a gravel parking lot for a number of years. There was a drape store that sold window treatments, window coverings for a number of years after it was the Yackel Grocery Store. The Yackel Grocery Store closed in nineteen sixty-eight, and then after that, it was another store. But these parking areas have been on there, on site, for a long time. We believe, just from talking to some of the neighbors when we were going around door knocking, that the, the south lot was paved in 2010, and just based on the condition of the concrete, that the east lot was paved sometime, you know, ten years maybe prior to that. One of the neighbors walked by, and she keeps coming over and checking on the property and kind of seeing, you know, how the project, if we're getting movement and things like that. And, and she said that she had a friend that lived there in the late seventies and that they were parking there then. So it's our assessment that the parking has been used in that location for a considerable amount of time. And I don't know, will this thing turn on if I-
Lay it there. In the meantime, I'll have Councilman-
You know, and I do have a follow-up question about the parking. So is the waiver for the deficient number of stalls that you have? Or is the waiver to allow and permit you to use the parking that's in the city's right-of-way? So which is it? And then the, the third question is, you mentioned other parking adjacent to it, and that there's only like two. Did you ever approach the other owner to ask for an easement, like, so that you could have that, I guess, memorialized in writing with them?
Yeah, so that's why I wanted to bring up the little visual aid here. So the parking situation is a little different here. You can see the yellow line is the property, our property boundary, so it goes to the back of the sidewalk. And then these blue outlined areas are the parking areas that were in the public right-of-way. And so nobody technically owns these. These are city properties. And we talked with both of the occupants of these properties, and they'll park one car here, and then there's one car that gets parked on the end. And so those are the people that we spoke with about that.
Oh, I thought it was additional parking on the other side.
Nope, yep.
And so is the waiver for the city granting you the permission to use that parking in the right-of-way for this project?
It is a waiver to, it's a waiver of the parking requirement for the redevelopment, so. So these will still be public property, public right-of-way, and then they'll just be available to our tenants, just as they would be any other members of the community.
Let me clarify this. So my understanding is that because it is public right-of-way, you cannot count it towards your parking allotment.
Correct.
And that's what the waiver is about.
Exactly. Yep, yep, correct. Yep, that zero to, what is it? We're asking for a zero, a waiver for zero stalls in lieu of the two that's normally required with the R two designation.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a comment. This is a good thing. You guys do good work.
Thanks, thanks. Thanks. We try. Our background's in historic restoration. Our background is in furniture-making, construction. And so we really love fixing up old buildings. We love breathing new life into them. You know, the stuff that's in these old properties will never exist again, and so we have to preserve it. We have to maintain it. It takes a little flexibility to do that, which is why we appreciate, you know, flexibility from all the other people that we've worked with on this. So it's, it's a good project, but- Yeah, yeah, we believe, we believe in it. We think it's a really cool project, and we know that we have the skills, the financing, and everything to send this thing home. We would be approaching completion if we hadn't run into the zoning issue. We wanted to start in August. So, you know, we, we have, we are ready to go on this project and to, to get this building restored and returned to the community, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Go ahead and call the next item.
I'll be calling item six C and six D together. Change of zone two one zero zero seven, application of Raybold Holdings LLC from R six residential district to B three commercial district on property generally located at seventeen oh nine Washington Street. And the related conditional zoning agreement between city and Raybold Lincoln Holding LLC for property generally located at seventeen oh nine Washington Street.
Good evening. My name is Nick Kelso. I'm a district manager for Russ's Market and B and R Stores. I'm here to talk about our proposed rezoning there to get a storefront that looks similar to the one in the photo here. The main benefits of it, of course, are updated look, but we want to continue to invest in the, in our near-south neighborhood. It will improve ingress egress in and out of the store and improve shopping pattern, shopping flow, and then it will make it so we have a better shopping environment and working environment for our, our workers and our customers in there with the way that we'll do, redo the front end, so the wind's just not whipping right through.
Yes, Councilman Christensen?
So as we look at this, are we, been there a few times. What direction are we looking? Are we looking, are we looking at from the street or from the parking?
From the parking lot.
Okay.
So our existing, existing front, this just replaces the existing front, just bumps out eight more feet. more feet.
The question, yes, Councilperson Washington.
Why is it you need the change of zone?
I think it is temporarily zoned and we're just getting it, so it's not a temporary zone anymore to just go from residential to commercial now. I have a helper here to answer some technical questions around that if that will be help.
Yeah, please. Because I'd be curious, how long has the temporary zoning been in place?
It's not temporary zoning.
I didn't think.
Marcia Kinning, Riga Engineering Group. It's actually zoned right now residential. It's zoned R6. And for this bump out to go in to that R6 area, we really need to get it actually changed to B3 so that we can have the building in that area. So that's why we're asking for the change of zone. It doesn't change anything. The parking lot still stays the same. Nothing else changes. It's just this little bump out is the reason why we're needing the change of zone.
Okay, so can I ask? So you're going to be doing a new front on this, which is in the parking lot, which faces east, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so you're going to bump that out a little bit and that'd be bumping out into the R6, which you can use for parking, but you can't build in. And so that's why they need to go to a B3 so they can go ahead and build that new, best to be all I call it, out front. And believe me, they need, it'd be nice to have a little more direction if you're coming or going or how that works out front. I'm just wondering, is there any other special, and maybe David, I'll get David up here in a bit. Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Do you have anything else you would like to say?
I think it's pretty simple.
Okay, David, come up here. Yeah, we'll come back to you if we need you.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. David, is there any extra screening that will be needed for this? As they're going to have a B3 next to R, I guess it's only R6 right there, 18th Street, right?
Let me, I'm going to show you the map. It's going to...
It's what I'm looking at.
It'll clarify what we're talking about. Okay, so we have the, the store itself is currently zoned B3. What we have is the parking lot, which is zoned R6 as it is next door with the residential. So they need to be able to build more space in the entrance going into the parking lot. In order to do that, you were correct previously just now saying they would not be able to build into that. They can have the parking there, but they wouldn't be able to build into that without a change of zone. So it makes it much cleaner to make the whole site one zoning district, the B3, plus it allows them to do the project that they're looking to do. You can still have the parking in there. They will still have parking in there. To answer the question about the screening, the screening wouldn't necessarily be required based on the improvement to the building. If there were any changes to the parking lot, which could happen over time, whatever the screening requirements are in the B3, they would just simply have to abide by that.
Okay. And if we did, if they did any changes to the parking lot, they would have to do under the new parking lot design standards?
Yeah, if there were actually changes that would have to come through for approval, they would have to abide by that. But that's not part of, well, I shouldn't say that. I would let the applicant speak to that. We're here to do the zoning change.
Right. And B3 goes all the way down the corner to the south through those two houses? Or not?
Speaking down to this side?
Yeah. And the two houses, it looks like, the zoning line?
There we go. Thank you. So it's R6 all the way around that?
Right.
But it's B3 over here, over toward, along the street.
And those two homes, 17 and 1710, are actually zoned B3?
Yes, over here.
Okay.
Correct.
And there's no, we, they can leave the R6 on their, I say their south parking area, the employee parking area. They can leave that R6 because they're not going to be building into that at all.
Correct.
Do we have any other questions for David?
Thank you.
Nope. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward and speak on this item? Anything the applicant wants to come back and say?
I'm thinking that we were talking about the change of zone and the zoning agreement, right?
Yes, we're going through both, yes.
So there is in the zoning agreement some screening along that adjacent to Washington.
Okay.
That they're in agreement of putting a few more shrubs along that side. But that's all that was really needed because there's already screening along the 18th Street. So just to clarify that.
I remember there's a fence there also.
Yes.
Brained on the east side.
That's pretty well fenced off in there anyway. But that's in the zoning agreement, correct?
Yep.
Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward and speak on this item tonight? Seeing none, do you want to tell?
I almost felt like I should recuse myself. It's where I grocery shop.
Yeah, that's true. Can you even like that?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we can move on to the next item.
Item 6E, change of zone 21008, Kruger Holdings Company LLC from P Public District and A G Agriculture District to O3 Office Park District on property generally located at South 84th Street and Hayek Drive.
I'm glad you could join us this evening, Mr. ...
Good evening. As opposed to the afternoon when we first talked. So yes, here on behalf of Kruger Holdings and the Talcott family, I will attempt to make the quickest change of zone speech you've ever had. This parcel, a couple of years ago, we took a fairly unsuorable parcel from the park, gave it to the park, got 35 acres down here below the park. And when we did that at that time, LTU wasn't sure about street design. And so since that time, they said, we'd like to have the right-of-way to do a future roundabout here. And so this area shows the land that the City of Lincoln will gain in future right-of-way. And the agreement with Parks and Rec and the developer was that, you know, if there was ever any changes that need to be made, they'd still be made whole. So we're simply taking square foot from here and then getting more parkland here. We have the deeds ready to get it deeded over. And so this is just to do the change of zones as shown to O3 to O3 and from AG to O3 on those parcels. And the developer will be whole on the agreement again. And the right-of-way will be dedicated by the final plat.
And that lot, lot, those two lots on either side are already zoned, oh?
They are because we previously came through with the use permit and the change of zone. Then they decided they want the roundabout right-of-way, so now we are back to making it whole again, like I said, and resolving it to the best interest of all parties. And the use permit was approved by Planning Commission, so we're just down to this change of zone and a new plat to come through and get this project going.
Can you tell me how much square footage you can build on or do you know?
Well, the plan right now, I think we've got, I think...
That's what you're trying to stay whole on, right?
Right, yeah. So the swap that we're doing with this process and the deeds is square foot for square foot. And so actually, I think the intention is to do some multifamily on both of those even though they're zoned O3, so. But we're satisfied. I think the actual area, Richard, comes out to be .13 and .14 of an acre, so.
Okay.
Not a significant amount of land, but it was...
The city's getting shorted on that.
Well, no, no, so no, that's what these two total. But the amount going to the city and the amount then going back to the developer is equivalent.
I know, I know.
Yes. This is a win-win we're all happy about.
Councilperson Raybold.
So is Hayek Drive already there?
No, it is to be constructed.
Okay.
And so that'll be, the right-of-way will be dedicated with the plat.
And so who, I see that the trail goes underneath the road. Is the, I guess, and it says future trail by the City of Lincoln, but is the developer also participating with the road construction as well?
Yeah, so as any standard residential street, the developer will improve sewer, water, paving, storm sewer and hayek. And so we are planning for that trail crossing. It is an at-grade crossing.
Oh, it's at?
It's in, yeah, it's an at-grade crossing.
Oh.
But we have it graded in and as part of this agreement with the park swap, we have lots of conditions that Parks and Rec Department gets to review our grade verification for the subdivision so that that trail meets ADA requirements. And so they will sign off on that before the final plat is approved too.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Nope. Is there anybody else who'd like to come forward on this item tonight? Okay, seeing none, we can move on.
Item 6F is an ordinance designating the area annexed by ordinance 21028, described and depicted on Exhibit A attached hereto as assigned to City Council District Number
Is there any questions or comments? Hello, Mr. Carey?
David Carey with Plan and Rec. I thought I'd just make sure we address this real quick. So this is the effect of literally a typo in the annexation paperwork. We had an area that is clearly in District 1. We had identified it in District 2 in error. This is to clean that up, I know. But when you look at the map, though, you won't feel too bad because there's...
You can walk the neighborhood.
There won't be any people living there. It is a, it's a piece that was part of that Camping World project that we brought through. So it is just a cleanup item. We want to make sure we've got the district lines drawn correctly.
Any comments or questions? Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward on this? Seeing none, we can move on.
That ends our public hearing for ordinance of second reading and related resolutions. Section 7 is resolutions first reading, items 7A through 7H. Section 8 is pending list date certain, items 8A through 8C. And we have our pending list, items 9A through 9C.
Councilperson Christensen.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say, remember the golden rule and adjournments.
Second.
Been moved in second by Councilperson Washington. Any comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Raybold?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?